We don't have any bad thoughts, but we have someone to do that.
I don't know what mic this is, I guess it's on. Attorney mic, test one, two. Mic number nine, test one, two. Mic number eight, testing. Yeah, they look good so far. Mic number seven, testing, one, two, three. Mic number six, testing. Mic number five, testing. Mic number four, testing. Mic number three, testing, one, two, three. Mic number two, testing. Mic number one, testing, one, two, three. Yeah, I'm a little ways back too, so she's hearing my voices, she'll pick them up fine. Tabletop, testing, one, two, three.
You want to test this time?
Did his tabletop sound okay? Go to one of those other graphics they just did.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Moore County Board of Education work session to order for today, Tuesday, September fourth. I'd like to start with approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry, five, zero. Ms. Caldwell, Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Alright, this is our first work session in the new school year. Welcome everyone to a new school year, very exciting. Dr. Grimsey, we have a lot on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of work has gone into preparing for this meeting today. I do want to express my gratitude to the board for your indulgence. We had a number of documents that simply just could not be posted until today. But nevertheless, can't wait another month, alright? Simply because we can't post them, we're not just gonna wait another month and put the business of the board off. So the purpose of the work session is to introduce documents. Over time, we've become so good at providing the documents in advance of the work session that we've kind of forgotten that this is where you introduce the documents. Everybody wants to have them completely digested before the meeting. But I want to compliment the staff for their work. You've got the day five enrollment report, which will take you up through Friday. I want to note that that's new. We don't normally introduce enrollment this soon. And so I want to emphasize the preliminary nature of those numbers. But in this day and time, when there's so much attention to our enrollment, I think that there is a public interest in that, even if everyone understands that it's still in its early phase. I also want to note that our work with the Area One Elementary School Student Assignment Plan is a dynamic process. There is no point at which it's finished until this board takes action. And so that has been the subject of work over the weekend. Our consultants and John Barath and Tim Locklear actually had a Sunday phone conference where they were working on this on a three-day weekend. I want to recognize that and thank them for their sacrifice to make sure that the board has the most updated information and that it's accurate and coherent for the community. So I could continue to go down. Lawyers were continuing to deal with the inter-local agreement, the lease agreement, and the technical revisions to the contract for the Aberdeen Elementary School late into the week. Working with the county government, there were changes being made late in the week, but we certainly don't want to defer that. So I do appreciate your indulgence with that. So without further ado, I will ask Mr. Locklear to come forward with the report on our five-day enrollment. He's joined by Kate Farr, Director Planning, Accountability and Research.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsey, Madam Chair, Board. Great first week, glad to be back. And we appreciate the opportunity to share some information about our preliminary enrollment as of day five here in Moore County Schools. As Dr. Grimsey noted, we're sharing this this year because we do believe our public is in tune with where are we with our student enrollment as we open up the school year. And we want to be able to give some preliminary information to our board as well as to our public and what we're looking at right now as of Friday. As we know, we've, Director Kate Fall of our department, her and her team do an incredible job monitoring this, staying on top of this, working with our principals and our data managers to monitor this throughout the process. So I'm going to turn it over to Kate and let her share where we are at this time.
Okay, thank you. We wanted to ensure that the board was aware of where our current standings are. The information I'm about to present is preliminary and subject to change throughout the first 20 days of school. We report enrollment every 20 days to the state. On day five last year, our enrollment was 12,541 students. On day 20 last year, our enrollment was 12,665 students. As of day five, which is Friday this past year, we had 12,775 students in attendance. This is 243 students more than we had on day five last year, and that is 110 students more than day 20 of last year. Some examples of population changes that we're seeing at the school level include a decrease in population at Aberdeen Elementary of about 6% and High Falls Elementary of about 5.6%. We've seen an increase in population at West End Elementary, they're at about 14% an increase. New Century Middle School is about 13.5% of an increase. And Elise Middle is about 11.2% of an increase. Based on our preliminary data, we anticipate seeing our first increase in student enrollment since 2014-15 school year. The state projects our 2018-19 school year numbers to be 12,768. We must be within 100 students of that number to qualify for the state budget allotments. Based on where we currently are, we have confidence that we will be within that number. We are going to continue to monitor the enrollment and the attendance on a daily basis. In addition to that, we also monitor in class size. But it's still early in the process and schools are monitoring and adjusting as needed during the first 20 days. I'm here to answer any questions that you have at this time.
The numbers you're reporting are bodies in the seat already.
Correct. People in the seat, does not include no-show students.
I don't have a question about this one, but after the 20 days, will we get a 20-day report? And will it be by school, by class size?
We will be happy to provide that for you.
Because I'm going to use that information on this K3 teacher thing, show them how many teachers we're going to be short.
We'll be happy to provide that information.
In fact, normally, normally we wouldn't make any report on this until October, but we just really felt we needed to. Kate, just repeat again, when was the last time the school district saw an increase in the number of students?
In 2014-15, we had an increase of eight students over the year previous.
Yeah, and do you remember, do you have down there what it was the year before that?
Sure, 12,879 students in 2014.
But that increase in the previous year had been, did you have down what the increase was?
No, I'm sorry, I do not.
It was substantial. There was a few, number of years there where we were in over 150 per year. And so we had an increase of only eight students in 14-15, then we've seen a modest decline since then. And so compared to day 20 last year, if we were to compare day five this year with day 20 last year, that increase is what?
110 students, which is...
What are you looking for, a percentage?
I was going to give you a percentage. 110 students more than we had last year compared to day 20 last year.
Are there any facilities issues right now that we're dealing with or are we managing? Are there any facilities issues right now or are we managing?
Been working with our principals where we, especially at our elementary level, where one or two students could require you by law to open up another class. And all of our principals believe they've got plans for that if they need it. We've been looking at some conditional situations where if, as you say, butts in the seats, Ms. Carter, if that happens, we know we're going to go ahead and have to hire another teacher, and they've got facility plans for that. So we're okay right now. We're okay.
You know, I'm reminded that the pilot's Person of the Year last year in 2017 was growth. And they talked about an eight and a half percent increase in census, in the census data in growth. So this seems to be in line with what they were saying, so. Not a lot of surprise, actually, when you think about it from that standpoint.
Wait till we get the new schools built and watch what happens.
I'm encouraged by the fact that an increase seems quite likely at this point. There'd been a lot of discussion this past year with the opening of another charter school. There was this sort of inevitable assumption that our numbers would go down. The fact that our numbers have gone up says something about growth in Moore County. I think it also says something about our public schools. Any other questions, board members, or reaction to this preliminary presentation of enrollment? We'll get another one in October.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Madam Chair, with your permission?
Yes, please.
I'll invite, let's see, we've got, excuse me, I've skipped over item B. Let me come back here. Got Dr. Powers, I know is in the mix, and Ms. Dedman. I was wondering if there was, I knew it was you two, I just wasn't sure if anybody else would be with you. So Dr. Seth Powers, Ms. Lucinda Dedman. Long anticipated report on outcomes of the administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey last year. We finally have all the components we need. We've got the national norms from the Center for Disease Control and the outcomes of our students' participation as well as those sample schools across the state. So Dr. Powers, some very important data that we can now use for benchmarking our program effectiveness and our planning for the future, so.
Absolutely. As you said, long awaited, long anticipated. The survey was actually taken by our students in April of 2017, so who would have thought it would take us this long to be where we are today? So, but glad to have the information. I do also want to say, you know, thinking about how we got to this point, I do want to, you know, the primary mission of our office is student safety, health, and welfare. And I do want to say thank you to Dr. Grimsey because, you know, he has kind of spearheaded that and actually kind of put it in our minds as where we kind of go with this in terms of, number one, just seeking to participate in the WRBS, but not only participating, but also seeking to be one of five districts in the state who were selected to be an oversampling district. So we got some more robust data for our district as a part of that, which is great. So glad to be able to share this with you today. So let's just talk about what is the WRBS for just a moment. Of course, that's the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It's given by the Center for Disease Control every two years. It is a national survey. Not every school always participates in that, but they get a good sampling from every state, from every state in the country. The survey measures risky behaviors that might lead to injuries or early death. And those behaviors include, and we're going to cover the results from all of these, all of these, alcohol and drug abuse, sexual behaviors, physical activity, tobacco use, dietary behaviors, and behaviors contributing to injuries or violence. So just to give you some information related to our students who did participate, 51% of our high school students, 2,095 students, 43% of our middle school students, 1,320 middle school students actually took the WRBS in April of 2017. The results are weighted demographically to match the demographics of our school system. And the charts that I'm going to share with you as we go through the presentation, compare Moore County Schools with both the state and national averages in high school. In middle school, you'll see that they only compare to state averages because there was not enough national data with middle schools. Only 10 states reported middle school data, so there wasn't enough national data. So, Sen and I are going to go back and forth.
Seth, let me just add, the students were randomly selected. So we have a high degree of statistical significance in the outcomes we have. And it's based on student self-reporting, and that's across the whole nation. So to the extent that there's error in teenagers responding on surveys, that error is consistent throughout all teenagers across the country.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And you'll hear me say many times of those student surveys, because I do want everybody to remember this is not necessarily, it's representative of our population, but this is not all students' responses. So, you know, 50% of our high school students, 43% of our middle school students. You know, we draw some conclusions from those things, so just keep that in mind as well.
Thank you.
While you're on that point, and Dr. Grimsey brought it up, how were these done, through home room situations? Through another test day situation?
It was actually, it was, we had to submit rosters for every, all of our middle and high school students to DPI. And they took second period classes, and then they did the random sampling for us and sent us a list of the classes that would actually be.
So a whole class at a time?
It was a random sample of classrooms.
Not every class, but a random sampling of classrooms, yes. Alright, so as we look at... I have to, okay. I also want to share with you that the numbers that you see are, that's percentages, although it doesn't say it on the slide. So just do keep that in mind, that it is percentages. And it's not, again, not reflective of all Moore County school students, but only the sample of the students who took the survey. You'll also see the green arrow where it says statistically significant. The CDC did report to us which of our survey responses were statistically significant. I'm going to have to work on saying that because I'm going to mess that up. That's hard to say together through this. But when you see the green area, that means it was a positive result for us. So when you see a red arrow, that means it was a negative statistical significance. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
So they were the ones who did the statistical significance test?
Yes, ma'am. We are not statisticians and we do not claim to be.
I know Ms. Fall is very good, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Kate has done it, she can do that, absolutely.
Seth, do you know why they chose some areas that are statistically significant and others they didn't?
It was...
Were there variances even more in other areas? Were there variances even more in other areas?
There, the most variance in the, in those areas that are marked, and the, again, not a statistician, but it it depends on, you'll notice that through some, there may be a smaller range that are not statistically significant, and others, there's a wider range that are. So, but it depends on, it depends on the range of responses. So if the responses were more similar and it was narrow, there's, would be a smaller range of statistical significance. I don't know if that makes sense.
Ed, it's a test that is run through the program, so the program tells you whether or not it's statistically significant or not, so it.
My point is, why, why aren't, so I assume all the other areas are not significant?
They're not, correct.
Even though the variations are different.
Correct.
So it must be the subject that the question they ask that makes the difference on what's really, okay.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
And it's it's the difference with the national norm. So in all cases, whether it's plus or minus, it's the difference between Moore County and the national norm is statistically significant.
Or the state, and that, so it's all.
No, it's either one or the other, not or.
Yeah, so in this case, it is the national.
Well, with the high school, it's the national, but with the middle school data, that's with comparing it to the state.
Okay, so we need to make that clear.
With the middle school, yes.
Okay, got to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, Lucinda, appreciate that.
Okay, high school driving behavior, going to take a quick look, and there's a lot of these to go through, and I'm going to try to do that.
Yeah, we're certainly not going to touch every question.
No, we're just going to, we're going to point out, hit the highlights here. You do see that question two, there is a statistically significant in a positive way there. That question drove when they had been drinking one or more times in the thirty days prior to the survey, so that's absolutely positive. I will say on the other areas here, that, you know, we were either below or at the national norms, other than question one, which was around texting while driving in the last thirty days. So very near those averages. And again, these first slides are high school weapons. You can see that questions one and three related to being threatened or injured with a weapon on school property in twelve months prior to the survey. Seven percent are carrying a weapon on school property at least one day during thirty days prior to the survey. Four percent were either at or near state averages. Question two, although equal to the state average of seven percent, the Moore County School Student Survey data showed a negative statistical significance on carrying a gun, not related to hunting or target shooting on at least one day during the twelve months before the survey. So that, again, is related to the the national average. And then question four, another negative statistical significance there. And this is of students surveyed, twenty-one percent reported carrying a weapon, that's a gun, knife, or club, at least one day during the thirty days before the survey. I do want to point out here that for question four, they did not distinguish between carrying a weapon for hunting or target shooting, and I do believe, we believe that accounts for the the little higher number there.
And they don't, they carried a weapon, but the number of times they carried a weapon to school is similar to other, the state and the country. So we're not higher at bringing guns to school, which is a relief.
But nevertheless, we're concerned that any gun comes on school grounds, right?
Violence and bullying, all questions related to violence and bullying for our Moore County Schools high school students who were surveyed, were at or or were below or near state and national averages. You can see the the one positive difference there. Were in a physical fight one or more times during the twelve months before the survey. So that was encouraging to see that that twenty percent compared to twenty-two and twenty-four percent of the state and national averages. High school sexual dating violence, again, this is a positive slide of those surveyed. All questions related to sexual dating violence were at or below state and national averages. Also want to emphasize that forced or unwanted kissing and touching are included as sexual behaviors as a part of this. So I think it's important to to emphasize that's a part of the questions related there. Depression and suicide. Again, this slide is a little more, a little more concerning here for our students surveyed. All questions related to depression and suicide were either at or above state and national averages. So we see here that of the students surveyed, nine percent reported an attempted suicide during the previous twelve months. Fourteen percent made a plan to commit suicide. Seventeen percent seriously considered suicide, and thirty-one percent felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that they stopped doing some usual activities in the twelve months prior to the survey. And even more disturbing, that's thirty-one percent of of the students surveyed, but forty-one percent of females reported reported that sad or hopelessness for two or more straight weeks, that they stopped doing their normal activities. Looking at middle school safety. Again, now we're just looking at Moore County schools and state averages. A middle school student surveyed, all questions related to safety, and these were, rode with a driver who had been drinking, rarely or never wore a seatbelt, or wearing a helmet while skateboarding or biking, were below state averages, which is very positive. Weapons, violence, and bullying on middle school campuses of our middle school students surveyed. You can see for questions one and two, we were near state averages, bullied on school property at forty-five percent, electronically bullied twenty-one percent. And those were ever, that those things have happened, not just within the last thirty days or twelve months. Question three, were in a physical fight. Those, that was a positively statistical significance, forty-one percent compared to the state average of forty-six. And then for question four, a negative statistical significance, ever carried a, ever carried a weapon, gun, knife, or club. Responses showed forty-one percent compared to the state average of thirty-four percent. However, again, this question did not delineate between carrying a gun for hunting or target shooting versus just carrying a weapon. And then depression and suicide in our middle schools. Of those surveyed, again, these were, these were more positive numbers than the high school. We were below state averages, eight percent that had ever tried to commit suicide, eleven percent ever made a plan, nineteen percent that had ever seriously thought about committing suicide. And then question two, ever made a plan, we were positively below the state averages there, at eleven percent versus fourteen percent.
Okay. So now we'll talk about sexual behaviors at the high school first, and then the middle school. So in the the high school self-reporting sexual behavior, our students are very similar to the rest of the state and the rest of the country. Twenty-five percent report that they are currently sexually active, which means that they had had sexual intercourse with at least one person during the three months prior to the survey. Now, among that twenty-five percent, there are some some questions about birth control, HIV testing. So among the twenty-five percent who report that they are sexually active, fourteen percent said they did not use any method to prevent pregnancy. So that's not different than the than the rest of, you know, North Carolina and the country. And that, I did the math there, and that's about, of all the students surveyed, that's just about three, three and a half percent of the students. In middle school, we're doing well. Our middle school students report being less sexually active than other middle school students in North Carolina. All right, alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, substance, substance use. So thirteen percent of high school students report binge drinking in the month before the survey. Thirty percent say they had at least one drink during the month. And that's not different, significantly different from North Carolina and the US. We do suffer when it comes to tobacco products. Our high school students report vaping and smoking cigarettes more than those in the country, but not more than those in the rest of North Carolina. So, North Carolina, I guess, being the tobacco state, you can see here that that effect. Middle school alcohol and drugs looks really good. Those are all statistically significantly lower in all of the questions in terms of alcohol and drugs compared to the rest of the state.
Cindy, could we go back one slide, please? I think sometimes we can get so caught up with looking for those that are statistically significant that we we miss one that's quite obvious, and that it was the frequency with which students are vaping. I I think I've seen, in the years that I've been participating in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, we've seen dramatic declines in student use of tobacco. You go back to the nineteen nineties, we were looking in the forty percent range, forty and fifty percent, over fifty percent were using tobacco products. And now, you know, you you might be inclined to be encouraged by the low numbers of tobacco use, but you can see clearly that it's it's being replaced by vaping activities on the part of our students, which, whether it's statistically significant relative to the state average or national average or not, that's an area that we can be keying into in our health curriculum.
Absolutely, yeah. I think there's a mistaken assumption that vaping is smoking that's not bad for you, and that's just not true.
Peppermint.
All the different flavors, yeah.
Cotton candy.
Double gum. So, yes, it's a, it's a real concern. You're absolutely right. Middle school tobacco products, our middle school students report smoking and vaping less than the than the rest of North Carolina. But still, seven percent say that they have vaped at least one day in the in the month before the survey. So seven percent of middle school students is concerning. All right, we're going to do the next part.
So we're going to look at diet, exercise, and weight. So here we can see, we do have a couple of negatively statistically significant questions here. Question one relates to drinking soda, Coke, Pepsi, Sprite, not counting diet soda. Statistically, it says, you know, we are seventy-five percent compared to seventy-two percent of the national averages. For the question number four of those surveyed, and then these, well, actually, two and three, two and three are related to eating vegetables and fruits, or drinking a hundred percent fruit juices. Although we're we're close, closely in line with state and national averages. It is a negative statistical significance there for eating fruit. We eat more, do better with eating vegetables than we do fruit, which is kind of surprising.
Well, if I read this correctly, ninety-three percent of our students eat fruit?
Correct.
That's, that's pretty good.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would think, actually, even though the significance test showed it.
Yep.
Less than the national average, but.
It's a positive negative.
That's right.
Well put.
High school physical activity. You know, those surveyed, we're above state and national averages for physical activity. The the lone negatives statistical significance here is related to went to PE class one or more days in an average week. It is quite a bit less, but I will point out, you know, this is related to national averages, although we are even below the the state there. But we do only require one physical education class as a part of high school, and that is in the ninth grade. So beyond that, those are electives that students will be taking if it were a PE class beyond ninth grade. High school lack of activity, weight. Again, we show here similar percentages with state and and national averages for overweight students, and and we, that we show fewer obese students than the state and national percentages. And just for your information, students were asked to give their height and weight as a part of the survey, which is what they used to, to, they put that into the, a body mass index formula to determine how many of those students were overweight or obese. Middle school physical activity, this is a beautiful slide, like the one we saw before, all positive. Our middle schoolers who were surveyed were well above state averages and positively, positively statistically significant for all questions. You know, I think this speaks highly of what we do in Moore County Schools and our efforts to make sure that our students meet those state guidelines of physical act, either physical education or physical activity on a daily basis. So that, that's a good thing.
I think we can also give a compliment to our parents.
Absolutely. Lack of activity and weight in middle schools. Again, here, we're below state averages for questions related to time spent watching television or playing video games, which I think, again, there goes, that's a, I think that's a shout out to parents as well, when they're at home, that, you know, they're being encouraged to do other things besides sit on the couch. So those are all of our, all of our graphs to share, just a summary of our results. To to put it in a nutshell, Moore County School students are more likely to carry a weapon, including guns, but not to school. Important to to make that clarification. Our students are more likely to smoke and vape, they're more likely to drink soda, eat less fruit, get more exercise, and have lower rates of sex or drug or drug usage in middle school. And those results align with the significant differences that you saw as a part of the the graphs. So again, our, those were some of the same things. We get, our students get more exercise, are less sexually active in middle school, use fewer drugs and alcohol in middle school. They do smoke and vape more, and more likely to carry a weapon, but not to school, and they drink more soda and eat less fruit. So our priority areas of need based on the survey results. As Dr. Grimacy also pointed out, you know, smoking and vaping is a, is a concern. So that will be an area that we'll want to focus on, how do we help to educate our students against using and even trying tobacco products? And then also depression and suicidal ideation. You know, as we saw, you know, we did have slightly higher numbers in the state than the average, but they were pretty much in line. But even then, twenty percent of our students have seriously thought about ending their lives, which is very concerning. You know, we thought, before we took this survey, just from what, you know, Cindy and I see day to day in our counselors, social workers, and psychologists, things they share with us, this was the feeling that we had, that this was a serious issue, and this survey has just proved to confirm that. You know, we talked about forty-one percent of all of our females have felt so sad or hopeless two or more days in a row, that they've stopped doing their normal activities. So these, these.
Two more weeks.
Yeah, for two or more weeks, yeah. These are numbers that definitely, definitely show our need for increased mental health supports in our schools, which we're fortunate to be, have some of those things going on this year. So let's send to talk about those.
All right. So we're excited, I know that you knew about our behavioral health intervention team. Now has four members. We have two counselors, a social worker, and a behavior and behavior analyst. And we found them in office today, that's exciting. We have, still have to get some desks, but we're working on that. They will be available to respond to emergencies, consult with the schools, train staff, provide case management, and provide short-term therapy until community support is arranged. Two of the members of this team came from, I need to point out again, Grant from Sand Hill Center, through our county commissioners, so shout out to them for helping us get that that team started. Very exciting time there. We've also had a first meeting of a mental health providers consortium, where we had a number of mental health private providers come together at our invitation to talk about all that they have to offer, and we crosswalked it with what we need in our schools, and we're trying to fill in, fill in the blanks. And for the the spots that our local providers don't have training for, I'm hoping that they will then say, oh, well, maybe we need to add this to our repertoire and offer it to the schools. So we're continuing to explore memorandum of understanding with the outside agencies for them to come into our schools to provide therapy as needed at, with specific students, but also thinking and trying to see if we can work out a way of having school-based therapists who are stationed at some of our schools. So we're working on that. We just applied for a state mental health grant to bring trauma-informed resiliency training to four of our schools this year. They submitted on Friday, and we expect to hear back mid-September. I feel very confident about that, that training. I attended it this summer, and it was really excellent, excellent stuff.
Could you explain that term, trauma-informed resiliency?
Trauma-informed, thank you for asking that question. So basically, students, people who have trauma, early trauma in their lives, are at much higher risk of not only mental health issues, but also actually physical health issues. We're learning about the ACEs study, Adverse Childhood Experiences study, which is now kind of sweeping the nation for people understanding that early adverse experiences sets you up for lots of at-risk, not just based on your behavior, but at-risk even physical challenges. So the movement is to be offering. So the movement is to be offering integrated health care at doctors' offices and pediatricians. And so what, the treatment for trauma is resiliency. Teaching specific techniques to adults and kids to be more resilient. And then that can actually, as they engage in these practices, then they can become more healthy. Their brain can actually heal and then can actually continue to function in the more, in the resilient zone, which is where you need to be to do learning and reasoning and relationship building and things like that. So this training teaches teachers how to use these techniques within the school districts, or their school systems and their classrooms. So we're hoping to have like the whole staff at a school get trained so that everybody knows how to use these techniques.
Examples of childhood trauma would be divorced by the parents, drug or alcohol abuse in the home, physical abuse of the child, incarceration of a parent, so those kind of things.
Or deaths of a parent.
Mental health issues, living with mental health issues, yeah.
Is this something that you would see that all schools would get training in eventually?
That's what our hope would be. Part of this grant is to train the staff at four schools this year. They are going to offer additional training for a champion within each building. So that champion would be the one that would kind of keep them going year after year. And then if the grant doesn't recur, we're still covered because we, part of this grant is to train three to five trainers that would then stay within Moore County. And we would have probably our BIT team trained as trainers so that we could continue on to the rest of the schools. So eventually, we'd like to have all of our schools trained.
I've seen this capturing kids' hearts. Can you explain a little more about that one?
Yep, and that's our, another initiative that's happening. So Capturing Kids' Hearts is a training that is, teaches teachers, changes adult behaviors to show students that the students are important and that adults care about them. And so it focuses on relationship building first so that the relationship within the classroom makes them feel safe and secure. And then they can have better academic outcomes once they're in a, in a good environment.
Is this mostly in elementary schools, elementary, middle, and high?
It can be in all, in all age levels. It's been
Where are we focused?
We're focused, Southern Middle is a pilot school. So Southern Middle has had this, last year was their first year, so continuing second year with them. All of our Title I schools have had a minimum of five staff members trained. Some, but we're, we're actually, we're working on a long-range plan for how do we, how do we, you know, continue to implement in more schools with the focus initially being in our Title I schools.
We skipped over the bullet point on youth mental health first aid.
Oh, yes, we did. Well, yes, we did. You're right. So the youth mental health first aid training, we now have fifteen of our schools have five staff members that have gone through youth mental health first aid. And we will have the other eight schools by the end of this school year trained. So each school will have a group of five who will, who are the lay experts, you might say, for mental health. So that if there's not a mental health professional immediately available and there's a question, then these teachers will know more about mental health in first aid, know how to respond, know when there's something really serious, or when it's just normal child development, a problem that's happening. So we've got people from each grade level so that they could be in, you know, their PLCs and their grade-level planning, and they're talking about students. Then they would, they would know, oh, well, this student you're talking about, we probably should refer. This is a real concern, or this one, maybe not. So they know how to follow through and look for mental health issues, specifically, of course, suicide being one of the main ones.
I had the mental aid, first aid, mental health first aid training, eight hours.
Yep, it's eight hours. Yep, it's pretty intense. And all of our results, all of our surveys have come back positive. That's been very helpful. Sometimes some of our counselors have come to it, although the counselors know already most of it, but because they're part of the team, it's nice to have them there, and they learned the model. And a number of our principals have come, which is pretty, pretty nice.
And you said fifteen of the schools already have a trained group. Does that mean all three of the high schools already do?
Um, no. I don't, no, it's not been our high schools. Haven't done them yet.
All twenty-three will be.
But they will be by the end of the year.
Yeah, so we're working toward that. So they just haven't. The dates that we had, that was not dates that they actually, that they signed up for, but we'll get them.
Right, and it was, I offered a certain number of slots because we had the trainers available, and they could only see, they have a maximum number of attendees. So I put it out there, and I said, first come, first served. So, but we'll continue on that quest.
And the state grant that you've applied for, have you pinpointed the four schools that will be?
We have, I'm talking to three principals that have been expressed real significant interest, yes. But we haven't ironed out those details, so I'm not gonna say that right now.
I'm leaning into, with the, with all of these various things, and I know they're important on every grade level, but with it being, with the targets being our middle schools and high schools, I'm guessing is where we'd go.
Well, it, actually, no.
Everybody has those needs.
Right.
And if we can take care of those needs early on, then hopefully those are not issues.
We don't have them later on, but knowing that we haven't been, you know, providing these things previously, or where we have, it's been on a more limited basis. Then we're playing a little bit of catch-up, kids that are already
Well, we most definitely are playing catch-up. We were a school district that was completely devoid of a focus, with a focused plan for addressing student safety, health, and welfare four years ago. Took us a couple of years just to figure out how to govern the school district. And now, you know, these last two years, I wanna, the reason why I said that was to emphasize just how much has been done just since Seth became Director of Student Support Services. Dramatic changes. Capturing Kids' Hearts, for example, it's fair to say that a lot of our progress is based on opportunity. So we can use Title I funds to promote Capturing Kids' Hearts. And so as a result, the high schools are not Title I schools. So you won't see Capturing Kids' Hearts necessarily making progress there. But nevertheless, our principals have teams that have been exposed to the training. And, and you're seeing some of the elements of it happening there. So the question really asks, it depends on which one of these initiatives we're looking at. There's a mix of opportunity and immediate need. But no matter where you look at it, we're making dramatic progress. If somebody had told me just six months ago that we'd have a behavior health intervention team, I would have told you you were crazy, that there was no way we were gonna get there. Well, here we are. And so, and we're administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which means we're actually measuring what, you know, we're actually paying attention to what these are and coming up with plans and addressing them. These are significant steps that we've taken. And so there, I would caution us not to focus on the fact that there's a few schools that are missing. We'll get there. This is a work in progress, and that progress has been very rapid in these last two years.
I will, I will share as well that although Pinecrest is not a Title I school, we have had a team of teachers there who have been training Capturing Kids' Hearts just because it is a, Southern Middle is our pilot. And with those kids moving from Southern Middle to Pinecrest, to hopefully that we can see some of those same strategies used there, but just not, it'll take a little bit longer there.
This board would benefit from a more detailed report, or maybe a school visit to Southern Middle School. I think you need to go and experience it to see just what a dramatic positive effect. That's, that faculty's commitment and the student body's commitment to Capturing Kids' Hearts. That is not the same Southern Middle School that we had just two years ago.
How does the PBIS fall into line with this?
Well, thank you for asking that. I was just trying to see if I could have an excuse to talk about PBIS because we just got our recognition back today.
And she didn't plan this.
I did, I know, but I owe you one. Southern Middle School has received recognition as a model school, which me, as, for PBIS, which means they're not only, they not only received eighty percent on their fidelity inventory at tier one, but also at tier two. So tier two is the time when you're intervening with some students, you know, not the intensive, but the supplemental supports. So they received their model school today. And Pinecrest earned a green ribbon. So they're a high school that is embracing PBIS. And so they have, they got eighty, over eighty percent on their, on their inventory in the spring. So they are significantly, obviously, embracing PBIS, which is a part of mental health. I mean, PBIS is definitely a big part of mental health. So it's very exciting to hear, to hear those things.
And we've had a couple of elementary schools that have been recognized.
Well, plus, yeah, we have eleven, eleven. And then Aberdeen Primary is exemplar school, and they're at tier three. So they got a hundred percent at tier one, two, and tier three.
I mean, that, to me, says a lot of what teachers and administrators are doing to support.
Absolutely. Takes them all in a school.
That was my point.
Yeah.
I want to make sure our staff gets its appropriate credit. And it's not just these people. I mean, it's our teachers, our administrators. It's been all hands on deck to focus on student behavior, student mental health, student safety, health, and welfare. It's about a culture. It's not just about vestibules. It's not just about call-in systems. It's not just about armed officers. It's about the culture that we create that promotes safety. And all of the research says that that's your best money spent. It happens to be the point where your dollars go the farthest, that you can measure real impacts from that. And Moore County's teachers and principals and school resource officers and behavior health specialists and the leadership provided by Seth, and Send has been extraordinary. And I want to make sure that message isn't lost.
Stacy, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, that was well put. I wanted to add too that the technology has been awesome this year. I noticed when I went to lunch with a few schools, they have these little IDs, and they're wearing them. And they're so proud of that, and they're like, no one's gonna steal my PBS. You know, those dollars that they carry around, or those cards. So that was very encouraging. A lot of them were wearing them, they were so proud. They, you know, if someone said a positive thing, they would scan my card, you know. So it was, it's really great to see that.
And that reminded me that we can't leave out Elise, Elise Middle School. They got their first green ribbon, and they do the scans as well.
Yes, it's really great.
We update you on all those schools in the monthly report.
Yeah, we're working already.
You're not supposed to know that. It's a surprise. Yeah, it's all a surprise, yeah. Just don't tell, don't tell Mary Kate Murphy, whatever you do.
I was a spoiler, sorry. It's working.
Yes.
Let's bring this to closure so we can get another item out of the way before midnight.
Our final, our final effort is gonna continue to strive to have our ratios of counselors at two-hundred-and-fifty students to one, psychologists five-hundred to one, and social workers at four-hundred to one. That's gonna still be our, you know, one of our, our missions is to continue. In addition to all of these things, we need to have our ratios.
Do these additional, that's additional behavior team, does that count towards those ratio, or does not? Because
I think that we could count them, yep, toward our ratio.
No, we, we would.
A question about that team. Did we have to rob any of our schools to get these counselors? Or social workers, or are these people who are new to this system? And we're not having to go back and fill high school positions or middle school positions? Oh, that doesn't look too good.
One of our, we did have a high school social worker who filled one of our roles on the team. So, but her, she's, we already have hired a high school social worker to replace her.
That's great, because I know it's hard to find those.
It can be sometimes, and we were fortunate in the way that worked out and had a, had a very qualified and high-quality staff member in the wings to step in, so that's good.
One last question about the survey. How many students opt out? I know that they can do so. Do we have a number of, of how many high school middle schoolers opt not to do the survey?
I don't recall, did you see a number?
I think it was a very small number, but I couldn't tell you for sure. I think I did read that months ago when I first got, not months and months, but you know, when I first got it. But I, I can let you know.
Well, part of the, part of the survey process as well, when the students are taking, they can elect not to do any of it. They can elect to just skip over questions that they don't wanna take as well, so.
Well, I know the high school trend is just don't take the form home to mom and dad if you don't want it to be signed one way or the other, you know, so.
Yeah, and this was, this was, yeah, different. But of course, they were made aware of it because the board you approved it. And then parents did have a chance to opt their children out, yeah.
I just wondered if that, if we have such a very small number who opt out, then that's not gonna affect the results. But if you had a large number choose to, it could.
And that's certainly something that they take into account when they're looking at. They've got, you know, so many detailed statistics people that they, that can actually say the word statistics.
Ms. Sander, Seth, let me just, let's ask the question very simply. Does anybody ever remember getting a database this comprehensive on the behaviors of our students relative to their safety, health, and welfare, ever in anybody's recent memory in Moore County? Does that help, Ms. Gardner?
Oh, yeah.
So we, is this the first administration of the Youth Behavior Risk Survey that we have?
Years ago, there was one that was opt-in, and there was such a small sample that it really wasn't an outcome that
I don't remember the year. I don't remember anything in fourteen years.
It's been, there was, I do recall as a principal at High Falls, many, many years ago, there was, I do recall
I gave one at some point.
Could have predated Mr. Cunningham's time on the board.
So if we don't have any trend data then to compare this to, at least with our students?
No, ma'am. The, the hope is going forward that every second year, or
Yeah, perfect, because you took us to our life.
Thank you for the segue.
Can I just ask, can I just finish my, so the second question is, are there any county-wide trend data for adults that we have to compare this to?
I'll defer to Send. She knows better.
Have we talked to the Department of Public Health or something like that to see?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there are adult data. I have not looked at that, but I'll be happy to do that.
I'm just curious if it falls in line. Some of these data points, especially about health and wellness, might, I'm just curious how, how that aligns and what they're doing to combat some of those things. And if there's some synergies there in terms of their work and
And certainly Send's work to build those synergies with agencies that was referred to a couple of slides ago will, will yield those kinds of comparisons.
And we have five different agencies on our consortium, or, I'm sorry, on our, the ACEs collaborative. And so a lot of us are looking at those, that kind of data, those kind of data to see, you know, that kind of information to see.
I may be able to get some of that for you Thursday. I'm going to the VA Community Health Summit at Methodist University. We're gonna be talking about those things, so I'm sure I'll get information there.
Glad to have it. Closure, Dr. Powers?
Just one last thing, just to point out, you know, moving forward with this, you know, we don't want this data to just sit in isolation. We want to be able to do something moving down the road to be able to make some comparisons and see if what we're doing is actually helping to, you know, solve some of these issues. So we have a survey platform that we'll be using this year in our district. It's called Panorama. That will support us with that. What we'll do is our plan will be to administer another youth risk behavior type survey with similar type questions. And the plan would be to administer that to eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders each year. So that they wouldn't take it every year, but every other year, they'd be taking something similar, which would then allow us to kind of look at the, look at the data by cohorts and track, you know, how are the cohorts doing, and are we making progress based on the strategies that we put into place? So that's our, our plan.
It'd be interesting to see if the child who's suffering depression in eighth grade
Right.
by twelfth grade, it says a not, or vice versa.
Absolutely.
But this is anonymous.
I know that it is.
It is anonymous, so we wouldn't know that.
But your numbers would be, yeah.
The numbers would decline, yeah. Well, very good. Any final marks, board members?
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. It's important information to have.
Madam Chair, you want to progress, or take a break, or are you ready to keep moving?
We're gonna need some time.
Why don't we take a three-minute break?
Stretch break.
Stretch break.
Stretch break. Come back top of the hour, Madam Chair?
Yes, please. Come back at four o'clock. Yes, please. Come back at four o'clock.
...
I call the meeting back to order.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, the, um, the, the, the school board earlier this summer established guiding principles for the assignment of students to the new school that's under construction on Camp Easter Road. We've been calling it the Area One Elementary School, but it is a school that eventually could serve children in both Area One and Area Three. So, um, a little bit of what you'll hear today is perhaps, uh, the beginning of a rebranding here. We, we're not ready to give it a name yet. That'll, that'll occur here in the next few months. But, um, but there's, as you'll see as this presentation unfolds, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, exactly who will attend this school, uh, and when would they attend? Do we, do we need all of the student assignments to be concluded for the nineteen twenty school year? Or are there some that can be deferred until twenty twenty-one? And, and I really want to compliment this team on the degree to which it has, um, engaged with school board members, the degree to which it's engaged with its advisory committee, uh, to bring us a draft today that'll now present to the community for further engagement beyond, uh, just these, these groups this summer. I want to remind everybody as we get started that there is no superintendent's recommended plan being presented today. So, um, the discussion continues to be a staff discussion with an advisory committee of stakeholders, including parents and staff members and, and a few others that are included, uh, that's been described to this board before. The staff is interested in school board feedback at this point to the draft that it's put together. After getting school board feedback, there'll be a community forum, uh, and then s, community input to the draft will be gathered there. And then the, the staff team, including our consultants, will meet again with their advisory committee and come up with refinements to the plan based on that discussion. And then we'll repeat that. We'll hit the repeat button. We'll do it again. Uh, a revised plan will come back to this board in October, and this board will be asked to provide feedback again. And again, that feedback will go to a community forum in October. More community input beyond the board, more discussion with the advisory committee. And then beyond that, we will move close to, um, that, the staff then with our consultants bringing a recommendation to me that I will then present to the school board in November. And it will then be an issue for the school board. Until then, the school board's just like everybody else in the public. It may be, maybe a little bit more important, but, uh, but, uh, we're, we're, we just are developing a plan and asking for people to have input. So the point I want to make clear to the public is that for those that want to weigh in and participate in this process, the community forums are the meetings to which they should be going. And that'll all be explained here in the next few moments. What, you know, when are those community forums gonna be? Where are they gonna be conducted? Uh, we really want everybody's attention to the, uh, our consultants and our staff as they put that together and to allow you all to just kind of relax and be part of the process with them, uh, for that. So, uh, that's, that's my introduction. Uh, Mr. Barath has got further introductions, and then we'll turn it over to our consultants for what I've, I have seen to be a, a very, very effective presentation. Mr. Barath.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Uh, just to, uh, bring additional information to the statement he made about the public forum. You've been advised that the first public forum's gonna be held on, uh, September twelfth. They'll begin at six o'clock and go till seven thirty at Vass Lakeview Elementary School. Uh, they have the capacity at that school with a very lar, large, multipurpose cafeteria space to, uh, ho, host anybody that does come from the public, whether they're, uh, current, parents of current, uh, students in the schools out there, community members that want to, uh, see what's going on and provide input. So that'll be the first opportunity for the public forum, again, September twelfth, six o'clock at Vass Lakeview Elementary.
And that's all schools that could potentially be impacted by this, John. Is that correct?
Correct. This will be for all the impacted schools, uh, consisting, as you'll see in the plan, uh, potentially the Carthage, Cameron, Farm Life, Vass Lakeview, and even Southern Pines, uh, attendance to come to and learn more and provide, uh, valued input to the consultants and to the staff. The, to help accommodate that, I also want to let you know, we will provide childcare at Vass Lakeview for parents who might have to have, uh, children in tow and cannot have other accommodations. We will have provisions there for childcare. We are sending notices home with students. We're gonna do connect ed calls and get the message out to the communities. And so we will be all set. Uh, we have a, uh, process and protocol already set in place for that meeting. And it'll be very engaging and the great, best opportunities, Dr. Grimacy said, for the public to give information as this is continued to be developed. So, just that's the highlight to start with. Um, we are going to, uh, following today because there's some confusion with the schools that you have right now, Area One, as the board has seen by the site that is being built on, this new school on Camp Easter Road technically is in the Southern Pines attendance area. It is also within the Southern Pines ETJ, they're jurisdictional. And so we're talking about that, but at the same time, we're talking about Southern Pines School. And the new school for Southern Pines that, uh, is to be, uh, complete in construction in twenty twenty. So to help bring clarity to that, we're gonna, after today, start referring to the schools, as Dr. Grimacy said, as a school, um, uh, the school, uh, on Camp Easter Road and the school off of Morganton Road. So there's no confusion when we say Southern Pines School. By mistake, someone's thinking it might apply to the other, and that's just for clarity in moving forward. So after today...
Nor does it demonstrate our, our preference for a name of those schools.
Correct.
We just, we just, just so people know which building we're talking, we're discussing, yeah.
And so through today's presentation, you're gonna see Area One Elementary, which will be the school on Camp, uh, currently on Camp Easter. And you'll see terminology for Southern Pines, which would refer to the new school off of Morganton Road. And following today's presentation, we're gonna make that change so it brings further clarity to the discussion with the public and everybody. So without any other delay, uh, Mike and Laura prepared a great presentation to you to introduce the draft, uh, that they've done. So I'm gonna let them walk through that with you. And of course, anytime along the way, if you have questions, feel free to ask.
And for viewers at home, Mike Miller and Laura Evans from Numerex, and of course, Mr. Tim Lockler, our Chief Officer for Academics and Student Support Services. We turn it over to the panel.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you for having us back. Superintendent, thank you, and members of the board, we're, Mike and I are happy to be here today. We've come a long way. I, I just asked Mike a minute ago, I said, when, when did we first start working with the staff at Moore County Schools? And he said, well, maybe March or April. Couldn't really remember. But we've had a good bit of discussion over that time to get to this point today. And today is really just the beginning of the drafts. We, as, as Dr. Grimacy said a minute ago, we're, we're not anywhere close to having a final superintendent's recommendation for you. Because this is the point where we start engaging the public in getting feedback, okay? So we'll start with just a little overview of what we're gonna present today. You can see it on the screen. We'll do a little bit, uh, cover a little bit of our previous discussions we've had with you guys. Your development of the guiding principles that we have worked with to present, to develop this draft number one. We want to take a little bit of time and talk about the process that we use, how we do, uh, analyses. And we look at those analyses to help develop the draft. We met with the advisory committee, the superintendent's advisory committee, and we got excellent feedback from them. We took that feedback and made modifications. We got feedback from staff and made modifications, all before we bring this draft one to you today, okay? We will bring draft one, the new Area One Elementary School. We will also look at the larger picture because we're not just opening one new school. We're opening new schools over a two-year period. And part of our work is to make sure we're not stumbling over each other year after year, that we have the larger picture in mind. What's the end result at the end of those two years, when all of the new facilities come online and their children are gonna go to the school, okay? And then at the end, we'd like to include an appendix because there's a lot of detail that we provide, a lot of detailed data. There are detailed maps in the appendix. There's some definitions because everything I say today, it's gonna be hard to remember when you get home this evening, and especially for the viewers who are watching online. There's the definitions of things in the back, so we think the appendix is very important, and we'll go over that carefully today. But each time we present a draft, we'll add more things to the addendum, okay? All right, so, as I said, we've had several meetings already. Uh, we started with you guys at a work session on, uh, June eleventh, and we explored, uh, your, your assignment policy. And if you'll recall, at the end of the policy, it says that you'll make assignments, um, help me out, what were the last few words?
Other relevant factors.
Other, based on, on other relevant factors. And Mike and I said, we would like your help in, in guiding us on what do you mean by other relevant factors. So over a couple of meetings and a meeting with the advisory council, you guys ultimately approved, uh, some guiding principles for us. And you'll see in a minute, we'll go over those guiding principles and, and emphasize how important it's been in developing draft number one. Uh, we actually have met with the advisory, uh, committee twice now, and, um, you approved the guiding principles on July sixteenth. We met with the advisory committee again on August fifteenth, where we showed them some analyses of, uh, different assignment scenarios, if you want to call them that. We like to call them analyses. And that's where we got good feedback to help us develop this draft one. Now, I've added to my paper copy that on September fourth, that's when the refinement begins. We're just presenting draft one today. We're gonna meet with parents and the community on September the fourth. Thank you, September the twelfth. I'll be there. Today is the fourth. I will be here on the twelfth. But, um, that's where the refinement comes in. We'll get a lot of good feedback from parents, okay? And then we'll work with that feedback. We'll meet with the advisory committee again. We'll work with their feedback. And then we'll come back on Sep, October third with the draft... October first with the draft two. The calendar's in here, thank God. You don't have to rely on me for these dates. But then we'll do it again. We'll get parent input, we'll get advisory board input, and we'll come back with a, a, a third and final draft, which hopefully the superintendent will accept as his recommendation, uh, for you guys, okay? All righty. So you've developed some really outstanding guiding principles. You kept it simple. You have four principles that you asked us to follow: balance, planning, efficiency, and community. Were the categories. Under balance, to the extent possible, you want to, you want us to provide balance for building utilization, program opportunities, and student demographic factors. Under planning, to the extent possible, we needed to use up-to-date school data. We wanted to be forward-looking and responsive to the community and student needs. Under efficiency, we wanted to oper, optimize operational efficiency. And under community, to the extent possible, we want this process to be transparent. We want folks to know what we're doing, why we're doing it. We want them to see the data. There's nothing hidden here. Everything we've done so far has been out in the open, and everything we do from this point forward, we want the parents to be involved in that process. So excellent guiding principles. In the top right corner though, uh, I think we've talked about this before, some key points about the guiding principles. There's no intended priority here, okay? Some guiding principles overlap, some may conflict, and you'll see this in the data. We may not realize some of the guiding principles to the extent you'd like them to be, okay? But that's gonna happen. And then some guiding principles are dependent on the schools impacted by the assignment plan. And as I said, we've gone over these with you before, but we thought it was important to refresh you on those points. All right, the process. We start with student data. And your staff has provided us with Moore County student geocodes from the two fif, two thousand fifteen sixteen through the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Geocodes are where we take the student information and we plot each student on a map. We know exactly where they live, okay? And then attach to that dot on the map that goes with the student, comes their test scores, comes their grade level, comes the school that they attend, okay? So we've got all that geocoded on a map, and then, uh, we use that to start doing our analyses for attendance areas. Additionally, we have the growth information that's provided to you by NC State. That's built into the program that we use. Mike, any other comments on this one? Mike, any other comments on this one?
No, oh, no, I think you covered it just fine.
Thank you. All right, so, in addition to the guiding principles, there's some other factors that we put in the, I call it the algorithm, I'm not sure what Mike calls it, the computer. There are, there is proximity, future schools, impact areas, utilization, transportation, and proficiency. And we listed them in this order for a reason. Proximity says, "We are gonna try to assign you to your closest school." But you've heard me say this before, in reality, that is not always possible, okay? But we're gonna do our best to do that. Future schools, we are going to try, the whole purpose is, we've got new school buildings, we've got new seats. The whole purpose of this is to balance utilization, use those seats effectively across the district. Right now, we've got some super overcrowded schools, and if we do nothing today, we're gonna be in a worse shape three or four years down the line. We've got some under-enrolled schools. So, the first two points, proximity and future schools, are very key to this draft, very key. And I told Mike, I said, "Let's use the word hardwired." Those two things are hardwired. We're gonna try to assign kids to their closest school, and we are gonna balance utilization, because we just spent a lot of taxpayer money to build new schools and new, or additional seats, okay? The next two things, the impact area, what schools will be affected by the opening of the new Area One building? That's got wiggle room in it. We could use every elementary school in the county, or we can just use a small number. I will tell you, the more compact you can keep that area, the more stability you'll have for your families. So, that's a wiggly one, okay? And you're gonna see in a minute, some of the feedback we got said, "Hold up on what your impact area is for Area One," because of the wiggle-ness of it. Um, utilization, we might have these a little bit out of order. Utilization is also a, uh.
It's a little wiggly, yes.
It's got a little wiggle room, but it's more of a hardwired. We wanna use all our buildings as best as we can. We don't want overcrowded schools. We don't want under-enrolled schools. But we also know, this is a two-year plan, and we're also looking at future growth, okay? Future growth in different areas of your county. So, the utilization numbers, there's a little wiggle there, okay? Then, we look at transportation. That's what's the best way to run those school buses. And a lot of that is really, um, is really guided by parent input and done, you know, saying, "Well, the best way to run the bus is blah, blah, blah." Or the parents say, "Oh, you've missed something here. The bus can't go from here to there," you know, or whatever. A lot of the parent input really helps us with transportation, okay? And then, the proficiency scores. Back to your guiding principles, the very first one was, um, balance. And one of those was student demographic factors, and that's where proficiency scores fall in. Now, when we report out proficiency numbers in the analysis we're gonna show you in a minute, the algorithm does not move students around based on proficiency. We've done that before, and what it ends up doing is giving the most crazy attendance areas you ever did see. So, we don't let the algorithm do that. But we do review the results of the algorithm, and if we can make adjustments for proficiency, we will, okay? But we'll do it by hand rather than let the algorithm do it. So, anytime proficiency is reported out in a set of data, it's just a reporting out, okay? And then, we'll explain how that works in just a minute. All right, so the analysis we're about to show you was just the starting point of how we got to where we are today, okay? All right, we're talking about the first year of a multi-year assignment plan. We've got the new Area One Elementary School on Camp Easter Road. It's gonna have a capacity of 800 students, it's gonna open in the 1920 school year. And our original impact area list was Cameron Elementary and Carthage Elementary, Sand Hills Farm Life Elementary, Southern Pines Elementary, and Bass Lakeview Elementary. And we've put the reason on the side there of why we included them in the impact list, okay? We've got a couple of schools that are super overcrowded and need relief, all right? One school is in the mix, because the new school actually sits in that attendance area. So, you've definitely gotta include that school. And the other two schools are thrown in there to balance utilization. So, we started with these five schools. Now, here's the process, okay? Basically, we start with, and let me see if I can get the mouse to show you, we start right here. And we start, Mike and I start generating some preliminary analysis. Mike shoots out the numbers. He shoots them to me by email, because we live nowhere near each other. I immediately call him up and say, "What about this? What about this? What about this? I don't like this. I don't like this." And he's just like, "Don't answer the phone," you know, so we review, okay? Then, we shoot it to Moore County staff to review. Then, we shoot it to the advisory committee to review. And on September 12th, the community gets involved, and the community will review and provide its impact. Then, we go back and make edits, okay? It's an iterative process. And then, eventually, we get to where we are today, where we're showing you our first draft. This is where we are after all that review and all different stakeholders have given us a little bit of input. This is where we are today. And we're gonna go through the whole process again. We're gonna have staff review. We're gonna have the advisory committee review. That meeting's already set up. The community will review, and then, we'll do the editing, and then, we'll produce draft two, okay? And we'll do it again. And then, ultimately, we'll produce draft three, and then, draft three becomes, hopefully, the superintendent's recommendation. Unless he says goodbye to us before it's over, which I hope not. But that's the process, okay? I want the public to see that they're involved. They have a big place in this process. I mean, we've done some work already, but the real, where kids are going to school doesn't start till today, folks. When we show you the first draft today, that's when, when, when parents are most, most want, mo- want to be most involved, I think is what I wanna say, okay? All right, so we started for the advisory committee, we started giving them two analyses. One analysis that was based solely on utilization, and it was totally computer-driven, okay? You know, the computer doesn't always spit out the best answer, but we let it do it. And then, we showed them another set of data, another analysis, that was driven totally on academic proficiency. And we let them look at the data and give us their feedback. And what we did was, we used their feedback, and we blended these two things together. And that's what we're gonna show you today, the blend, okay? But before we get to that, let's show us, show a little bit more about the process, and boy, this is hard to see, I know. I've gotten smart and I have a little hard copy in front of me, all right? It's a lot of data. If you're a data person, then you're just gonna love this. It's a lot of data. All right, what we have here is the current situation, 17, 18 school year data. We have the five schools that are in the impact area, and then, we have a line here for the new Area One school, okay? But notice for the new Area One school, there's no data, because this is the current situation, and currently, there's nobody going to school there, okay? So, currently, for these five schools, we've given you the minority percentage. We've given you the 17, 18 capacity of the school. We've given you the 17, 18 utilization, okay, and that's, um. Lost that thought. Well, it'll come back to me. We've given you the 19, 20 capacity of the school. We've given you the 19, 20 projected utilization, those, okay? And then, we've given you, um, some proficiency data, and in this chart, it's the 2017, 18 English Language Arts data for each school. Now, the first question people are gonna ask is, "What students are we talking about here? Are we talking about the charter schools? Are we talking about homeschool? Are we talking about Moore County students?" This is data of students who attend Moore County schools. It's not charter school children or homeschool children or, uh, any others. It's Moore County Public School children. Those are the children we know, okay? All right, now, I said we did two analyses. The first one focused on utilization, all right? If we're focusing on utilization, the goal will be to better utilize our buildings. And if you'll see, in the 19, 20 utilization chart, we, we would currently have a, one school at 144% utilization, one school at 113% utilization, one school at 60%, one school at 77. That is not balanced, okay? So, when you look, though, when we run the analysis, we get a pretty nice balance here, don't we? I think the low is Southern Pines at 54%, and the high is 89%, Sand Hills Farm Life. Nobody over 100%. Well, that turned out pretty nice. Well, then, we started looking at some of the other numbers. We don't really do anything with minority numbers. We don't do any shifting of students with minority percentages. But we do look at those numbers, because we're not real keen on racial isolation. And if some of the changes we can make in, in an attendance area improves racial iso- isolation, we're very happy about that. And so, we've got, um, one school here, Southern Pines, at 59% minority. And we look in the analysis, and we, the changes to balance utilization brought the racial isolation higher. We're like, "Whoa, that's not really the direction we wanna go," okay? And then, when you look at proficiency, I think there's something similar here, wasn't it, Mike? Where the proficiency, we went from, let's see, a low of 58 to a high of 73, current situation. And then, in this analysis, we went from a low of 54 to a high of 71. So, we look at all these numbers, all right? Now, focus on proficiency. Balance the proficiency column, okay? I think we've done a good job balancing proficiency, but what did it do to utilization? We still have some pretty unbalanced utilization numbers.
Laura, this might be a time to remind them of Mike's, uh, his, uh, his term, it's like a ball of gelatin.
Yes.
When you mess with one piece of the data, it jiggles like a ball, it, it, it makes sense to me, because I'm hungry right now. But when you jiggle, it jiggles into another area and impacts another area, and that's what we're seeing with the data.
Absolutely. That's what you're seeing with the data, absolutely. So, we showed these two sets of data to the advisory committee, and the advisory committee is made up of school staff. It's made up of parents, it's made up of school administrators, I believe. Who else is on that, was on that committee?
Board members.
Some board members, thank, thank you, sorry. Some board members. It's a really great group of people. You know how sometimes you get an advisory committee and they sit there and do nothing, say nothing, they're not really helpful? That is not this group. This group was very involved, very much willing to, to give their feedback, and it was great. So, we, we shared these two analyses with the advisory committee, and this is what they said. They're super concerned about Southern Pines. Everybody in the room was super concerned. Had a hi- a high minority percentage, uh, had low proficiency. They felt like it was unbalanced with respect to the other schools, and they wanted, they wanted this, the, the superintendent's recommendation for assignment for Area One to help with that, okay? And so far, under the analyses, they didn't think it helped, okay? They were also very concerned, again, with Southern Pines, because Area One school opens to the east of Southern Pines Elementary. There's another building, brand-new building, opening just slightly to the west of where the current Southern Pine schools are. So, they're gonna get hit on both sides. So, they're super concerned about, "Wait a minute, we need to make sure the data we're looking at for Southern Pines is the end result." Because if you're only gonna get hit once in one year and then get hit again in another year, that's not good. First off, you could stumble over yourselves and assign multiple students at the, twice. You don't want that happening. And we wanna see the end result. Is this going to help Southern Pines? So, they were concerned about multi-year student instability, as well as staff. If you take the population down one year and then bring it right back up the next year, that's messy, okay? So, there was a lot of discussion about how to, how to not have that problem. And I think we're gonna, we've got a solution we're gonna recommend here in a minute. They were very concerned about future growth potential at Bass Lakeview, and didn't feel like that either analysis really addressed that correctly or sufficiently. And they were very concerned about seeing the end results, not just a one step, then the next step. They said, "The end result of the two-year plan is super important." And you know, everything we do has the end result in mind, okay? Even though we're only showing one year, then the next year. The algorithm has all the new schools in it, and everything is going together, okay? All right, so that was the feedback. So, the first thing we did was say, because we're very concerned about that double whammy on Southern Pines, is that, "Wait a minute, it might be best to hold back on Southern Pines Elementary and not make any changes to that school till the second year, okay? And that solved a lot of in-between problems. Solved that student population going up and down. It solved, uh, what could potentially be moving the same children more than once, okay? And it gives the whole picture of what Southern Pines would end up looking like once each of the new schools or the, all the new seats were, were online, okay? So, we pulled it out of the impact list. We said, "There's no problem with that. We can wait on any changes to Southern Pines Elementary," okay? All right, so the first thing we did was we adjusted the impact list. All right, then we combined the utilization analysis and the proficiency analysis, and we produced our draft one scenario, okay? So, this is where your head's really gonna spin, because it's so little. Everything we do has a lot of data, okay? But, and I'm gonna walk you through the data. The definition of the columns is in the appendix. We've highlighted one, two, three, four, five, six columns that are the most important, that give you the most information, okay? So, in the addendum, we'll give you all of this detail. But in the presentation, we're gonna narrow it down to those six columns, just to make it a little easier, okay? But let me go over what the data is. First, we have the schools listed here. This is a multi-year plan. Notice, we have all the elementary schools in Moore County. Three of them are highlighted. The three of them that are highlighted are not impacted in either year at this point in time. We don't anticipate that they will be, but they're not impacted. So, eventually, we're just gonna leave them off the chart altogether, okay? The other schools, either the first year or the second year, will be impacted by the opening of these new schools. All right, the first column gives you, this is all current data, the minority percentage. The next column gives you the month to ADM, average daily membership. And that's for two previous years, the 16, 17 school year and the 17, 18 school. Pretty soon, well, not till October, I guess, we'll have this year's a month to ADM, but we don't have it yet, okay? Then, we get into, um, membership right here, and we have three columns worth of membership, all right? Let me go through this carefully. We have resident membership, we have base membership, and we have base percentage. All right, resident membership means the Moore County Schools' children who live in the attendance area for that school. So, Aberdeen Primary and Elementary, we combined them together. Aberdeen Primary and Elementary, there are 679 elementary children who live. who live in the attendance area who attend Moore County schools, okay? Not charter school children, not private school children. These are our kids, your kids, okay? The base says, of the six hundred and seventy-nine, five hundred and ninety-three of them attend Aberdeen, all right? The difference between those two numbers, those children attend one of your schools, but it's not Aberdeen. Does that make sense? So the percentage of base attending base is what I like to call it. Kids who live in the Aberdeen base, who actually attend Aberdeen, is eighty-seven percent. And for all your schools, that percentage is high, which is a really good thing. Kids are going to school in the school they're assigned to, okay?
As opposed to other Moore County public schools?
As opposed to other Moore County's public schools.
Through the transfer policy.
Yes, through the transfer policy, thank you. All right, then we get into this column called non-base, all right? And for Aberdeen, it says twenty-eight there. What that means, for the seventeen-eighteen school year, there were six hundred and twenty-one children on the day-two membership count at Aberdeen Elementary School, okay? But five hundred and ninety-three of them were base students attending base. Students who live in the Aberdeen attendance area who attended Aberdeen. So there's a difference there of twenty-eight. Well, who are those twenty-eight children? Those are twenty-eight children who are base assigned to a different elementary school, but through your transfer process, or some other way, are attending Aberdeen Elementary. Just subtract the numbers, okay? And you do not have big high numbers, although you do have some higher than others there, if you'll go down that column, okay? I call them transfer students, I don't know what you guys call them, okay? All right. All right, then you get into three columns about forecast residential membership, all right? You get, and this is where your NC State data comes in, okay? Where they talk to the municipalities, they talk to the county people. They say, what, what do you know, what's going on, what apartment complexes are going in, what new subdivisions are going in, what can you tell us? And then they give you these forecasts, okay? And so for each school, we have a nineteen-twenty forecast, student population. We have a twenty-one-twenty-two forecast, and I said student population, but I mean residents. Elementary children who live in the base, who would be assigned to that school, okay? And then a twenty-three-twenty-four. All of our work, we're looking at the end game of twenty-three-twenty-four, okay? That's a key number for Mike and I. And then we also give you, what, what is the change over those, these years? And so for Aberdeen, we're seeing a slight decline, you see. For the next school, Cameron, we're seeing a slight uptick, all right? And we'll, we'll follow those numbers, and that growth, or lack of growth, is built into the algorithm. So we're planning for that to happen, okay? All right. I know I'm spending a lot of time here, but it's important to understand what you're looking at. And don't forget, the addendum has definitions of these columns for you. Now we get to the four highlighted columns, and these are all super important. You've got your seventeen-eighteen capacity and your seventeen-eighteen utilization. And then you've got your nineteen-twenty capacity and your nineteen-twenty utilization, okay? We've got the very next year highlighted here, because that's, that's the first year the new school opens up, okay? But equally important, although it's not highlighted, it will be in the next chart, is the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four capacity and twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four utilization, okay? That's our goal. We're looking way down the road to make sure we're using our buildings in a balanced way. Then we've got proficiency. We're giving you three years' worth of proficiency data. And this is grades three through eight, three through eight, language arts and math, okay? Three years' worth of data, that's a lot of data. I just like to focus on one. I have a longtime friend, she always says, reading is fundamental. She says that about everything, reading is fundamental. And so I like to look at that English Language Arts seventeen-eighteen data, okay? And that's how I go through the different analysis, looking at just one number, it's just easier for me. All right, we understand? All right, let's shorten it down now, and at the bottom, the current situation. We just have the, what I say are the, you know, the numbers you really need to pay the most attention to, the minority percentage, the current capacity and utilization, and the nineteen-twenty capacity utilization, and then your English Language Arts seventeen-eighteen data. Okay, it's about time for the big reveal.
Can you clarify the data, just, um, you said three through eighth grade?
Do you want to talk about that anymore?
Oh, it's the end of grade tests, by student.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions, yes?
Uh, you said that you put the Aberdeen primary numbers in with Aberdeen Elementary. Did you do the same with Southern Pines Primary and Southern Pines Elementary?
Yes, sir. Any others? Okay. What is that show that says the big reveal? What is that, uh, you know, talking about, they have that big bus, and they drive it, and...
Oh, yeah, Move That Bus.
What's it called?
I don't know.
Oh!
I just remember them saying, Move That Bus.
You know what I'm talking about, though. Okay, so page, slide fourteen. All right, here is the data for our draft one, first year of a multi-year plan. Listen, it's the first year, it doesn't, we are not at the end result. There's another year that's going to come. And we're going to show you that date in a minute, but there's another year that's going to come, that's going to get us to the end result, all right? The first set of data is current situation. It's what you just saw on the last page, okay? All right, the second set of data is the data that comes from draft one. All righty. Let's look at the minority percentages. Current situation, we have a range of eighteen points, from high to low. Draft one has a range of eleven points. That's an improvement, okay? It's a significant improvement. Let's look at utilization, nineteen-twenty utilization. We had two schools over a hundred percent, one as high as a hundred and forty-four percent. We had one school that was under-enrolled at seventy-seven percent. In draft one, we have a really nice balance here. What might jump out to you, though, is this Area One Elementary School, whoa, why are we starting it so low? Well, two, two reasons, two reasons. One, remember we put, took Southern Pines Elementary out of the mix for this first year, okay? In the second year, Southern Pines will become part of the mix, and it may, it may be that they shift some of their students to Area One Elementary, okay? It's very likely that that will happen, but it'll be the second year, okay? Another good thing about this being sixty-eight percent the first year is we're going to have one more year of data after this first year. And the more data you have, the better you're going to be in your long-range projections, okay? So when we come back, if you have us back, when we come back for the twenty-twenty-one year, we'll have one more year's worth of data, and these numbers are going to change. And you're going to see in a minute, the long-range picture is going to show you that Area One Elementary School is, its, its utilization will be balanced, okay? Questions about this data?
Remind me what the focus is of this data, is it utilization and proficiency, or both together?
It's both.
It's the combo.
It's a combination. And we took out Southern Pines Elementary as an impact school for this first year. I didn't touch on the English Language Arts number, but if you look there, um, we've got, we go from a low of fifty-eight to a high of seventy-three, but the end result, they're a little bit more in line with each other, but no, not, not significant changes going on there, okay? All right. And then we get to the part the parents really like to look at, the map, the map. But please understand...
Thank you.
I think you understand this, but we are very data-driven.
Big map.
Mike and I are very, very data-driven. Parents are very driven by the map, okay? They really are, and I understand that, I understand that. So here's the map, and I think if, Mike, if you'd like to go with the map, you want to do that?
Sure.
Can you see it okay?
I think so.
All right, just threw that at him.
I hope you can read the, the legend on your paper copy, the legend up in the upper-right-hand corner. So the red lines you see on the map are the current boundaries for the elementary schools for the entire county. And the colors represent the proposed, in draft one, the proposed attendance areas for Carthage, Cameron, Sandhills Farm Life, Vast Lakeview, and the school on Camp Easter Road. You'll notice that, uh, if you look just to the south of the yellow area, the yellow is always the new school. Just to the south of the yellow area, you see a star there. That's the location of the Camp Easter Road Elementary School. So that school still exists in the current Southern, uh, Southern Pines boundary.
Say that again, because that's pretty important.
Okay. Just, uh, just to, just to clarify, the, the location, the site of the Camp Easter Road Elementary School, opening in nineteen-twenty, is inside the Southern Pines Elementary area.
And it will be for its first year that it opens, because we're delaying making any changes to the Southern Pines Elementary until the year we can do, do it all at the same time, okay?
So the idea there is that the Southern Pines Elementary students will all move at the same time?
That is correct.
They move en masse, rather than
Yes.
one group at a time, and then another group.
Yes.
That's helpful, I would think, for, for friendship groups. I don't know what else to say on neighborhoods.
Absolutely, and it also, you know, uh, we'll, we'll stay away from that two-year jump or decline, and then a jump again in population at Southern Pines Elementary School.
Uh, one of the telling things about this map was, uh, the feedback that we got from the advisory committee and staff was, um, we weren't, uh, we didn't feel like we were, uh, reducing the utilization of Vast Lakeview enough, based on reports of future growth, and what the data in our database tells us about future growth. So if you'll focus in on the purple area, the purple area is Vast Lakeview, or the proposed draft one area for Vast Lakeview. Uh, you'll see it's much, much smaller than it is currently. The red boundary shows you the current Vast Lakeview, uh, attendance area. So it's much smaller, that's a good thing. And you'll also see where, where Cameron, uh, grabs a piece just to the north of the school. You'll see Sandhills Farm Life takes some of the Vast Lakeview area currently as its attendance area. This is all in an attempt to try to reduce utilization at Vast Lakeview. And you'll see the yellow, uh, takes a lot of the southern portion of Vast Lakeview. So we've got about as close to the school as we can get. And you'll notice back on the data that, that Vast Lakeview still has, uh, seventy-nine percent utilization in nineteen-twenty, and it is forecasted to grow beyond that. Very, uh, as, like I said, about as close as we can get to the school for Vast Lakeview.
Questions on the map, or how to, how to interpret that map?
I was just going to say, and I, I know you want to say something, um, that for parents that are looking at this, because they do look at the map versus data, a lot of them do, um, and they're looking for their street address. Can you please explain to them that that's when the, kind of the potatoes come out during those parent meetings and those? That's kind of where we dissect all of that. This is just kind of like your big blow-up.
Absolutely, thank you for saying that. This is just the, the high view. In the addendum is a very detailed map that you can zoom into, all the way down to the street level. And this is where we really do rely on parents to tell us, wait a minute, you've, you've cut off part of the street, or this street is part of this neighborhood, and that's where, that's, that's the feedback we're looking for, because neither Mike nor I live in Moore County. And we love that kind of feedback, because, I mean, we could sit at a map and stare at it for hours and days, but for parents to point it out to us is super helpful. So yes, so they, we want parents to, this prob, this map right here is probably not the most helpful to them. Go to the map in the addendum, which is all online, right? And they can zoom in to see those streets and help us out with that, definitely, definitely.
That information is going to be supplied at the community meetings, and we will be there to try to understand what their concerns are.
But it'd be great for them to see it first, too, so they can come with questions as well.
Absolutely.
John, would there be a portal on the homepage that will be used, provide user-friendly access to this, or do they have to fish through the school board?
Uh, right now, currently, this is linked to the board, uh, presentation. After tonight, we will link it to our, uh, school page for the Area One new school. And it'll be linked into there for people to access it, and they can see the map.
You might also want to comment, I recall the advisory committee having conversation that another area that was held back was, uh, an area where, um, we really weren't certain if those students were going to end up at the, uh, the, um, school on Camp Easter Road, or the school at Morganton. They're, they're currently Farm Life students. And not knowing where they're going to go, they may end up at Farm Life for yet another year, pending, you know, where we end up, because we don't want to move them twice within two years.
Correct.
Is there any further elaboration on that, just to clarify?
Uh, that is in the lower southwest area of the proposed draft that Laura is circling right there. That we left that purposely for that very reason, moving children only once, impacting families only once. And so, the next step of this process will define where those students go. So for one year, they will stay at Farm Life, and in the following year, when everything happens with the, uh, Southern Pines and Aberdeen, those attendance areas, that will be the appropriate time for their new school identity or assignment to be enacted.
Just for the purpose of, of full disclosure, that would be that extended area of Airport Road that comes, uh, from the, um,
The roundabout.
By, by the roundabout through Sandhills Farm Life, O'Neill, down through Pine Grove and that area.
Right.
Uh, there, there may be some children along there who are Southern Pines students who may end up, they're currently at Farm Life, they may stay there, but yet, they need to be on notice that in the next round, they are most likely going to end up at one of the two. We just aren't moving them until we know what that is.
Which one?
According to this draft, that's, that's where the staff is, is resting. So when people look at this, simply because you're in the Farm Life zone, and we say the next phase, we're going to move on to Southern Pines, you may yet end up at one of the Southern Pines schools, okay?
That is correct.
Uh, John, can you remind me what our, our, um, when we went through the ORED study last, uh, spring, when we were looking ten years out, what is the trigger number? What is the number we're sort of looking for in terms of utilization? What's our, sort of our ideal number for utilization? Or when we start to think about other, I guess that's the point, the word, when we start thinking of other needs and other buildings?
Ninety-five percent of our utilization triggers the, how are we going to mitigate this continued growth in the school? That's where you need to have a plan in place. You don't want to find yourselves where we are currently looking at a hundred and thirty-two percent and trying to figure it out. When you hit ninety-five percent, best practice is have a plan in place, be ready to enact it, and fund it. So when we hit those trigger marks, that's when we're going to decide. And, and as you'll see later in the data, they'll, we'll talk about that a little more.
Okay, because it looks like, when I look at that number for utilization, it looks like it does even it out for all the schools, so that there's more, um, it's, it, it, it makes it even across the board, which is good. And then the other question I had is, and I don't know if anybody knows this off the top of their head, what is our overall ELA proficiency rating for the county or the state? Anybody know that? Thank you, I knew you would know.
I'll look it up specifically.
Yeah, because that's another thing I'm looking at, like, are we...
It's released officially tomorrow. Right. I'm, I'm speaking seventeen, uh, excuse me, sixteen-seventeen is in the sixties.
In the sixties.
We'll know tomorrow, it'll be close to that.
Because I'm looking for benchmarks for each of those lines to see, and, and that seems to also be within, within the realm.
Mr. Baran, busing, talk to us about the transportation routes and efficiency we might meet with these kind of divisions.
Our initial look at this draft is positive. The routing that would, uh, result from these proposed attendance areas... The routing that would result from these proposed attendance areas is very achievable. The whole thing with the efficiencies, again, will take us down to different dialogue, but let's just focus on the opportunity for school bus transportation with these assigned areas without creating overlapping conflict with adjacent ones is good.
All right, any other...
Also, I want you to note, Mike stressed this, but you look how tight we are to the existing Vast Lakeview Elementary with this draft. And again, the reason is, as Laura mentioned, the advisory committee and staff recognized that without doing this, you were, we were going to find ourselves in a situation we don't want to be with the utilization of that school moving forward. So when Laura talks about the long term, you'll see what that impact means.
Okay, can we just go back one slide a second? I just want to review that, remember backward, backward.
Going forward.
Yeah, you're going forward.
Mike wants to end the dialogue.
Just remember that this data on Slide fourteen is the condensed data. The more detailed data for Draft One is in the addendum. Okay, I just wanted to say that so the public could hear, the more detailed data is in the addendum. And then on the map, I just want to, just a reminder that the new Area One school is currently in the Southern Pines attendance area. The next new school is just to the, if you could point them out there, is right here. So you've got two new schools coming online in very close proximity to Southern Pines Elementary, and so that's why we've delayed any changes to that school for another year. But changes could happen on both the east side and the west side of the current Southern Pines Elementary attendance area, okay? And that includes changes that would affect Sand Hills Farm Life, all right? Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. Okay. All right. Then we're very much about the larger picture here. Mike and I, we're not just looking at one year from now, we're looking out to twenty-three, twenty-four, okay? And we're looking at all the additional seats that are coming online over the next two years. And so this is the data that shows that greater look. Remember, the first set of data is the current situation. The second set of data is the larger picture of where we hope we'll end up, okay? If you'll look at some things to consider, starting in the minority percentage column, we begin with a range of fifty-two points, we end with a range of forty-two points, so we're moving in a good direction there. If we look under proficiency, we begin with a range of thirty-four points, we end with a range of twenty-nine points, okay? Under utilization, by twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, all of our schools are under a hundred percent, okay? Take a note, the new Area One Elementary School, remember, after the first year, they were at sixty-something percent. At the end of the second year, or, excuse me, by twenty, well, yeah, this is the end of the second year, we're getting them up, you see, where we want them to be, and by twenty-twenty-three, we've got them up to ninety-three percent. The schools that were under-enrolled by twenty-twenty-three will be more in line and better utilized. So all of the goals that we set forth having by your guiding principles, we feel like we're not perfect, but we've made good steps in that direction by twenty-twenty-three.
So when the Southern Pines, the Southern Pines School, the new school is designed and built, are you stating that Sand Hills Farm Life could technically get more students? Or is that baseline going to be directly that baseline no matter what?
None of the scenarios have Sand Hills growing.
Okay. That's good to know.
Good point, good clarifying question there. Any other clarifying questions?
Just to clarify, that growing because we move children into it.
Growing in base.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be growing because there's new subdivisions, but not growing because we're moving children in. The thing, the point that I made with Mr. Barath earlier was, is that whereas we may have been inclined to move some children out of the Farm Life district into one Southern Pines school or the other, that determination can't be made, so they may stay at Farm Life one more year until we can make that determination. It's premature to make that, and we don't want to move those babies into one school one year and then move them the next year. So I think anybody will need to just have a little compassion that we just move slowly on that, just add one more year there.
I'm struck by these numbers, and I know we've said this before, that I'm very thankful for our foresight and planning of going to eight-hundred-student schools. Because we are, we're now in a position to be able to accommodate the growth that we were projecting from the, from the data that we got last spring, and then to see how it actually plays out here with populating these schools, or a potential plan for populating the schools.
With John stating, too, that Vast Lakeview is kind of like Florida, you know, it kind of sticks out, there's nowhere really where for them to go at the lower end. So I understand that we have to pull, and you may be close, like myself, I'm very close to Vast Lakeview, but on this map, it doesn't state, you know, I might have to go to another school, and I'm okay with that as long as it's lessening, because we can't have Band-Aids. So if it's lessening the kids at Vast Lakeview, that's a good thing.
Could you talk to us just a little bit about the middle schools and this new Area One?
Currently, the middle school lines are unchanged in any of these analysis, so there's no changes whatsoever in the middle school attendance areas. But looking at, go back to the, let me go to the appendix where there's a slightly larger map. But the current middle school line, as it is today, and looking at Draft One, the way we have it at this point, would bisect the new Camp Easter Road school, the yellow area here. So at this point, for Draft One, it does appear like the Camp Easter Road school would be going to two different middle schools. As would Farm Life. Once again, this Draft One has no, middle school attendance areas stayed as they currently are.
And just to clarify, that'd be New Century and Cranes Creek.
Yes, sir.
And then in the future, if Southern Pines children attended, Southern Pines domiciled children attended this school, potentially, we could have children going to three different middle schools, including Southern Middle School. But again, that's not a decision we make now, we have to take it into proper order. The mission has been to draw down the overcrowding at Sand Hills Farm Life and Vast Lakeview. That was mission number one. And so I applaud, I have applauded the committee as they've sought to advise me on the direction they've gone, to make sure they do that first job that the taxpayers and the voters chart, that first charge that the taxpayers and voters have given them to date, and that is to make sure that you take care of that first responsibility. It just so happens that that's a good management approach, because it would be inefficient and it would be unfair to get ahead of ourselves and start to redistrict Southern Pines children before we know what the full capacity is going to be, once the new Southern, the new, what we call School Morganton Road is available. And indeed, the school in Aberdeen, and we're one year closer to the school in Pinehurst. There's going to be a lot of robust discussion about that. Assignment planning timeline?
Yes. On the timeline, today is September the fourth, and we've shared with you our Draft One. Remember, it's just the beginning, refinements are yet to come, starting on September twelfth. We're excited about meeting with parents and getting their feedback. I think, like John said, everybody's being invited, information is going out. We feel like it's going to be a really good time, good time, be fun, interesting. It'll be good feedback, I know that, just from my experience, it'll be great.
And how are, I'm sorry, but how are parents getting engaged? How are they getting this invitation? I don't know if, John, that's better for you to answer, or...
We'll be pushing out on social media this opportunity. We've worked collaboratively with Catherine Blair to come up with a communication plan and support our principals and that as well. We'll have connected scripts to push out, to communicate that. We'll also offer an online opportunity for parents and communities who aren't able to make the community input session, to also offer their input and feedback about how we can refine this first draft, do that online as well. So we'll be using multiple mechanisms, including variety folders, send home flyers, variety folders, to invite our parents and our communities to this agenda.
Will there be food provided for the kids?
There'll be refreshments provided.
And babysitting for the, I think that's really important that you did that.
Let me just drop off and run.
There'll be snacks.
No, they won't.
Bottle of water, and there'll be childcare. We're working, Principal Scott at Vast Lakeview is working with New Pines and getting some folks there to help as well. We'll have childcare and snacks and that sort of thing.
Great, thank you.
It'd be great if Mary Kate back there can make sure people understand that this would be a great time to come and get all the facts and have the opportunity to speak out rather than just appearing at a board meeting, maybe not knowing exactly what's been decided or why it's been decided. This public meeting will be wide open for questions.
And we'll be there to listen.
Absolutely.
They have a great protocol design that we're, you know, it's a protocol that helps every voice to be heard at the tables, and where they're able to reflect on their individual thoughts, and then collaborate at the table, and then report that out. All of that will be collected, we'll record that and post that online as well, so the public will be able to see the feedback gathered with me.
That's wonderful.
All right, then September seventeenth, we'll meet with the advisory, the superintendent's advisory committee again for their feedback. We'll work with all the feedback and come back to you guys on October first with Draft Two, okay? Then we'll take that on the road, as I like to say. We'll have another public engagement meeting on October the third for feedback on Draft Two. We'll meet with the advisory committee, we'll make revisions and refinements. And then October the twenty-ninth, that's our target date for coming back to you with the superintendent's recommendation for the assignment for the nineteen-twenty school year, okay? And then November fifth is the target date for you guys to take official action on that, all right? Oh, and then we did add, in February, we actually planned to start this process a little early for the twenty-twenty-one school year, because we've, you know, we started here with you guys in your guiding principles, and we've worked through that first, but now that we've got that in place, we can actually start the twenty-twenty-one assignment plan in February, so parents will know a lot earlier, and that's always a good thing, the sooner they can know something about assignment, the better for families.
And that next phase will affect more schools?
And it will affect more schools, absolutely. But we will have a similar process where we'll start with drafts and allow public feedback to make refinements before we ever come to you guys with the superintendent's recommendation, okay?
Well, I think it's good that we're done before the holidays, because November and December start to get incredibly busy at the schools and in family lives, so...
Absolutely. When does your kindergarten registration start?
March. It's usually March.
Great, great.
We have an appendix, and we've already referenced what's in that appendix, but in just the last minute that we have here, can we just look at the MCSK five student relative density chart? And just explain to board members and the public what that shows, because it's a pretty remarkable display.
So in assignment planning, the first thing you realize is that students aren't distributed nice and evenly, they're in clumps in urban areas and neighborhoods, and in rural areas, sometimes you can go long distances without students. So this is to give some type of idea to board members about the areas of higher density. The darker, the green color, the more students per unit area in there, and then when it gets lighter, there's not as many. So you can certainly see from Whispering Pines, kind of arcing down through Southern Pines and on down farther to Aberdeen, the denser areas of the county are well illustrated there. And the reason this is important is when you're looking at new attendance areas, you may see these very large geographic areas that are assigned to one school or another, and there may not be very many students in those areas. But this, hopefully, you can use this to correlate the maps that you're looking at with where a lot of the students actually live. This is by residence, by the way.
Everybody understand how that map works? I thought it was enlightening, so that somebody who's child, they might be, they might look at a map and say, well, I'm four miles away from this school and five miles away from that school, why do I have to go to the one that's five miles away? Well, that's, in order to capture the eight-hundred students to that building, we've got to have a larger zone, and that means that people farther away have to travel in. So I just thought we'd make sure we emphasized that. Board members, any final questions or feedback for our committee?
I'll just say this density map is extremely helpful, because it also, to me, reinforces why we have so many school buildings in the central, the more central area, because we need them there. That's where they are.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Another three to five minutes to transition.
Yes, please, let's do that.
And then the last items, board members are much more customary.
I'm.
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 I call the meeting back to order?
Madam Chairman, thank you. The first item under pending action and discussion is resolution in support of the sales tax advisory referendum. And it has my name listed as the staff contact only because I worked with you to, to do the clerical work and Sonia as well, to do the clerical work in putting together the resolution. A copy of it has been included in the packet and it's available for any tweaking that the board would like to do tonight. We've patterned this after the similar resolution approved by the county commissioners. And Madam Chair, since you oversaw the final tweaking of this, you, you made a couple of refinements, I thought I'll defer to you. And just offer it for the board's consideration between now and next week. Madam Chair.
Sure, the only, a couple of comments that I would make about this, in addition to what you just said, that it is patterned off of what the Board of Commissioners approved their own resolution, I believe it was two weeks ago. One of the things that I'm recommending to add is really making clear about the language, that we're talking about one-fourth of a penny or one-fourth of a cent. The actual, the actual language on the ballot will say one-quarter percent, but as we just.
One-quarter cent.
One-quarter cent.
One-quarter cent, not one-quarter.
We have an error in the, the bottom.
Right, where?
Where it says the very, very bottom there, local sales and use tax.
No, then, no, it does say one-quarter percent.
Correct wording.
And then in parentheses, it says zero point two-five. You're correct, Madam Chair, forgive me.
See, it is confusing.
Yeah.
So, recalling what happened in two thousand and sixteen, we remember that a lot of people were confused. They thought it was twenty-five percent tax. They didn't understand that it was twenty-five of, I can't even say it, one-quarter or twenty.
Fourth larger than the current.
Yeah, one-fourth of a percent. So, the language here that I added is just more for us, I think, to remember to use the word one-fourth cent, one-fourth penny in thinking about what the impact will be on, on our, on the constituents. And just as a reminder, that is, for instance, twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars extra that would be used fully for supporting school construction costs. And the, the Board of Commissioners have pledged through their resolution process, they have, they have made a resolution to say that all of that extra one-fourth of a penny in the sales tax would go towards Moore County Schools' construction. So, they have made that resolution as well. So, other than that, this mirrors the same as the county commissioners, that it also points out that the, 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 the local option sales tax that's being added does not count on prescription medications, unprepared foods, or fuel purchases as well. So, that just is clarified here as well. So, those were the things that I wanted to point out and I'll take any other observations or edits suggested as we'll vote on this next week.
Yeah, this doesn't require an edit, but I do think it's worthwhile to point out that many of the counties surrounding us already have an extra one-fourth cent sales tax, may or may not be used for the schools. But people who go to Fayetteville to shop have been paying an extra one-fourth cent for quite some time. Same thing for going to Randolph County or Lee County.
Durham.
And Durham, Chapel Hill, they all have this one-fourth cent tax. So, the burden has not been overwhelming so far, but other people are, are benefiting from the fact that we don't have it here. And the addition of this would definitely be of great support for our schools and, and future needs within the schools, especially with the dedication the commissioners have put to being, ensuring that it's going to only go for school, school needs.
Any other questions or comments? Further refinements?
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I'm trying to make up a little bit of time here because a lot of what you're getting, you're accustomed to getting. Mr. Bundy is here to present our original budget, which is the actual budget now that builds on the state budget, which has been approved and the county commissioner's budget that has been approved and the year-end closeout. Mr. Bundy?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Madam Chair and members of the board, as you recall, back in July, we presented kind of our, our state impact on the budget. We talked about substantial raises for principals, assistant principals, and then classified staff, where the state approved those raises. And then July one, the new budget came into effect. This is kind of the next step in that process to adopt our original budget for the eighteen nineteen school year. And as you'll see on the, on the screen, we have a short PowerPoint just to go through some of the, some of the items related to the original budget for eighteen nineteen. And I think we continue to improve in our, in our, in our budget process. We continue to make progress in that, on that arena. When you look at this slide, it talks about the summary of budget impact to look at what has become clear in the budget process to date. We have new grants that have been approved for our school district. The North Carolina Digital Learning Initiative State Grant was awarded to the district. The current amount for this year is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The total of those grants are four hundred and forty-one thousand. One is a two-year grant and the other's a three-year grant. And that was initiated by Mr. Steve Johnson and the, and his team, the STEMS or STEM process was involved, the DISs were involved. One thing, a point of note is that the Innovation Academy Grant was awarded to just four LEAs this year. Moore County School was one of those, one of those that were awarded, the Innovation Academy Grant, which is, which is deposited for our district. We also have a grant awarded for improving in our SRO, School Resource Officers this year. And then you had, you heard from Dr. Powers and Ms. Lucinda talking about our Behavioral Help Intervention Team. And those are supported by two grants that are new this year. The School Mental Health State Grant of seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then the grant through the Sand Hills Center, the local grant, which flows through Moore County to us, is a grant of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So, all those are very positive improvements in our process, allows us to establish the behavioral team that has been a, has been an item on Dr. Grimacy's agenda for many years to get that team established and help support our schools, to help support our students. Very positive. New local cost in excess of the budget in the budget process back in the spring, we approved some items related to the state budget. One was a item of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we approved as kind of a public budget amount for the impact of the state salary increase. It's not really knowing what they would be at that time. The number actually turned out to be five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in total. And our budget, that we identified in the budget was five hundred and fifty thousand. So, that difference in excess of budget is the thirty-seven thousand that you refer to, that we referred to on the slide. The second item that I want to point out to the board in this budget process is looking at our scale-based salaries. That was approved by the board back in February, where we went from a percentage-based salary supplement, local supplement, to a scale-based salary local supplement. And we looked at recalibrating that scale this year. And that is, again, we identified about two hundred and fifty thousand in our budget approval through the April process. And that totals around three hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, that difference is an impact to, to local costs in excess of the budget. We look at those two items, they're very, they're not a large increase over the budget amount. A lot of those you can equate to, to the, to a vacant position during the year as, as, as our employees come and go. We realized some, some savings through vacancies that materialized during the year, so that will cover some of those costs that are there.
Mr. Bundy?
Yeah.
The, the School Resource Officer Grant, that is to be used for additional resource officers?
Yeah, the grant approved.
I remember when we heard about the application process, but.
Got approved for four, four officers. And the, the prior grant was for three officers. Really, this, this provides us one additional resource officer, so three we have plus one additional officer.
Excellent.
And has that person.
Yeah.
That's okay, we're probably asking similar questions. What's the total and when will that person be hired?
They're in the process of posting that position and the interview process is underway to have that person onboard.
And what would their total number of SROs be at that point?
That'll make us somewhere around fifteen, I believe, in our SRO.
I refer to Dr. Powers.
Dr. Powers, where, I don't know where he's at.
So, be a total of fourteen.
So, we go to fourteen plus the, plus the chief.
No, thirteen plus the chief.
Good news for our district to have more officers in our schools. We did receive notice that, that the school district does not qualify this year for the PRC one oh nine, which is low rule incomes. Last year was two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And through efforts with Mr. Eklund and his staff, we've identified savings through various programs and renewal of license of almost that equal amount, two hundred and six thousand dollars to offset the loss. So, it's not totally made up, but it's a big, a big, big substantial reduction in any loss that we would incur, just it was a full dollar loss of the two hundred and nineteen. So, we recover about two hundred and six thousand just through savings and efforts by Mr. Eklund.
Yeah, I, I would like to, if I might, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Add to that. Essentially, we had a reduction in state funding for technology of two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Mr. Eklund has gone line by line through his budget and has released two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars of money that he could relinquish.
Yes, sir.
In a technology budget that's grossly underfunded. So, I want board members and the public to understand that, that this is not a pain-free reduction.
Correct.
We're in a hurry here, but I want to make sure we don't lose this point. This really strips down our technology budget to where we can, we can function. But we certainly don't have a lot of wiggle room here. And let's hope that, that Mr. Eklund can get through the year without a whole lot of emergencies.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's true.
Does everybody kind of get my drift on that?
That's an important distinction, so thank you for clarifying.
All right, we can, we, we don't need to go through each line here, do we, Mike?
Yes, sir.
On this. The bottom line was, is that, that Mr. Eklund has gone through and actually reduced his budget. So, what otherwise would normally be a two hundred and nineteen thousand dollar liability that we would go to the commissioners and ask for help on, we're not going to do that. But what we are going to do is we're going to put our, our technology capacity a little bit at risk here for a year until we sort out where this is going.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The next slide, just kind of, just recaps where we've been over the prior years related to our county allotment. The county approved in eighteen nineteen a total county funding of thirty-one million dollars. That is broken down between our local fund of twenty-nine million, five hundred thousand, capital fund, the capital fund of seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then the digital learning fund of seven hundred and fifty thousand. For a total provided by the county of thirty-one million dollars for the eighteen nineteen school year. This is further detail of that, of that breakdown. It looks at each of the funds, the local fund, the capital expense fund, and the digital learning fund for the total of the thirty-one million dollars. We had a, we had an item identified in our budget for maintenance allotment of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we'll discuss in another slide in just a few minutes. And then potential to look at a carryover and supplemental request for our capital expense, our fund for, for our replacements and building maintenance that we have. At the potential for a, for a future discussion with the county, subject to board discussion and approval in that process. So, you get to a total budget of thirty-three million, two hundred and eighty-one, three fifty-two with all those items considered in the process.
Nothing is figured in here for, and I'm not sure who to address this to, with the digital learning, nothing is addressed here concerning the infrastructure. Is this correct?
Well, if I might, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with your permission. Dr. Wells Brown, I think that if you look at the capital expense, one point nine million.
Mm-hmm.
That, that is based on the twenty-year plan we have for, for maintaining our capital, our facilities. The technology infrastructure need, which we've projected for twenty twenty-one to be about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, would be over and above this.
Okay.
Or, depending upon the capacity of the commissioners, it may have to be part of this and we do one point nine million less in high-end improvements to our facilities. I would take advantage of the opportunity to say at this point, that if the sales tax is approved, the commissioners have one context to receive that request. If it's not approved, they have another context to receive that request. So, this isn't just about the commissioners, the sales tax isn't just about the commissioners paying the debt on the new schools. This is about the context that it creates for them. What, what will their capacity be? If they have to apply three million a year to just paying off debt on new schools, then that's three million a year they don't have available for lower property taxes and/or to assist us with technology infrastructure and other upgrades to other buildings. So, all these things are tied together, it's important to never forget that. But that one point nine million is where that conversation with the commissioners would be. As of now, in our last spring, we put them on notice that we would be coming to them at the end of their fiscal year with a request for supplemental, one-time, one point nine million for capital improvements. That may have to go to that technology infrastructure in the event that that's all they have.
Well, I know we're, you know, have new schools that, that the technology's going to be better in, or the infrastructure part. But I'm, I'm thinking centrally, we, we are in a building that needs some major overhaul from what I've seen.
Correct.
And so, I'm, I'm, I want to keep that in the public's mind for.
The technology infrastructure is a fixed cost.
Yes.
And it will be over the next three to four years. There's going to be a, a decreasing amount of money. So, it's a timely question, but that's where you would look for that money right now.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
The next slide just looks at the local expense fund, the county appropriation of twenty-nine million, five hundred thousand. In addition to that, you have revenue from fines and forfeitures, four hundred and fifty thousand, interest, and then appropriated fund balance of six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, which is on the next slide that will provide some detail. So, the total for the local expense fund for eighteen nineteen is thirty million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And this details what the, what the items are related to the appropriated fund balance. Local costs associated with the end of the lease for the Chromebooks related to a Winthrop lease, a two hundred thousand. Local obligation for charter schools, looking at the potential impact and increase of student attendance in our charter schools. This will be a report we'll bring to the board in, in October, hopefully, to just give you an update on where the charters are, what their numbers are, and then how does that impact our local budget. The maintenance allotment that we referred to on a prior slide of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to just cover the, the needs of the maintenance area. And then the two items we referred to at the start of the presentation, just the local costs associated with the scale-based supplements and local costs associated with the, with the, with the impact, local impact of the state salary increases that were not identified in the budget in April. in the budget in April. All those total up to six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, which is what is our appropriated fund balance into the eighteen nineteen school year.
And what was your surplus in your cash fund balance at the end of the year, Mike?
Surplus in the cash fund balance, when you look at our overall fund two availability, the total fund balance at the end of June was two point eight million dollars, two hun- two million, eight hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, which leaves us an available unassigned fund balance of two million, two hundred and twenty-six and some change in unassigned fund balance. So there is some, there is, our unassigned fund balance continues to grow and increase, and our appropriated fund balance continues to decline.
Right, but our, but our annual goal for the unassigned fund balance then, which is used to buffer those delays in federal funding and whatnot, is?
Is two point, uh, two point two million.
Well, it's, no, our goal every year is two million dollars.
Two million dollars, yes.
So since we exceed that, we go to two point eight, then that, that point eight, that eight hundred thou- eight hundred and forty thousand is available to help with this.
Yes, sir.
But that, again, from one year to the next, that's, may or may not be available.
That's correct.
Board members, I want to make sure we make that point clear, because we're not using fund balance for reoccurring expenses every year. This is an annual event where we have to stop and check, but we had a, we exceeded our annual target of a two million dollar fund balance by eight hundred thousand dollars. That was money that was available to cover this six hundred and thirteen thousand dollar liability. Does anybody have any questions about that?
So we're just over our two million at this point, what's left, there's, we're just over, so there's a little bit left.
Just, just, just over, right.
The, the final slide just shows the overall total budget. We have a, a state public school fund, Fund One, of seventy-five million, five hundred and forty-six thousand. Local expense, current expense, Fund Two, of thirty million, five ninety-three, five hundred. Our federal Fund Three is seven million, eight hundred thousand. Capital is, Fund Four is one million, six hundred and eighty-six, nine hundred and fifty dollars. School Fund, Fund Five, Child Nutrition Program, five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then our local operations, which is kind of our, I call it our grant fund, one million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The total budget is one hundred and twenty-three million, forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of, that we present to the school in the eighteen nineteen original budget process. So, and then I would like to go to the, the.
Resolution.
The resolution.
Wrong resolution.
So this is actually what the board approves, is the, is the budget resolution. And what I'd like to point out, just a couple of things, you'll see that we have the preliminary numbers that were presented in the April-May discussion of the budget, and then, of course, this is our presentation of the original budget. You'll see that the state number is, is dramatically higher than it was in the preliminary budget. That really is a two, reasons of several factors. Number one is you don't really know what the state dollar will be until the budget's approved and adopted by the state, and you start applying those allotments that come out from the state. However, most of the increase is related to salary and benefit costs for, for state employees. We, we saw in July that we talked about a six point five percent increase for teachers, a large increase for principals, a, a increase for assistant principals, a two percent increase for classified staff, increasing the retirement rate went up, increasing the health insurance rate went up. So all those impact the dollars that you see, so it's not really new money, it's just money committed, already committed to costs to cover our salary and benefits of our employees. If you scroll down just a bit, Blair, please, you'll see this is our local money, which shows our revenue, and then you'll see at the, at the bottom, fund balance appropriated, that's a six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars that we talked about earlier, that is appropriated from, in this year's eighteen nineteen budget. Scroll down to the next page, please, Blair. On top is our Fund Three, federal funds, seven point, seven point eight million, and you'll see that that's a, it's a, a little less than it was in the preliminary, because we had some decreases in some of the federal funding, but all, you don't get all the money upfront, so you usually don't start budgeting money until it starts showing up. A lot of those monies don't even materialize until October. So this time of year, you don't really know exactly what the total dollar's going to be, you have a guess, but until they start actually showing up in the allotment reports, when we start really looking at a, identifying the budget. Capital outlay is one I wanted to mention. The county approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you'll see on the note that, if you recall, in the, in the prior year, that the county approved a, my sheet here, the county approved additional money that was set aside for some of the projects that we had in the school system of two point one million dollars. Well, all that money wasn't spent last year, so what we're appropriating is the unspent funds into this year to account for the funds, to be a good steward of the resources provided by the county. So that is added as an appropriated capital fund balance for this year. So the seven fifty has been increased to one point six million because of the unspent funds provided from the county of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Then you have the school nutrition fund, and then you have the local operating fund. And, and that concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
This is an item for the board to consider for next week.
Yes, sir.
Any final questions from the board?
Sure.
Madam Chair, with your permission?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Ms. Locklear? Item C.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsey. Madam Chair, Board, Kate and I here to ask for your, your consideration of our, our alternative school accountability option, the model that we use for CLC at Pickney. It's a very similar process we use, in fact, we require per state board policy to get your approval of the alternative school accountability option of how they are recognized.
And this is not the first time we've done that.
Not the first time we've done it. There's a small tweak, just a little different, based on the new federal plan, but I'm gonna let Kate very quickly talk about that and see if you have any questions.
This comes in two parts. The first is the alternative schools accountability model. That's the measure that's on a different scale than other schools. Our recommendation is that we continue using the same option as last year, which includes a twenty percent student persistence, twenty percent school achievement, and sixty percent growth. Again, no change from what we recommended last year. The second piece to this is, for the first time, alternative schools are also going to be issued a standard school performance grade, and we have, that's going to be used to help determine schools that need greater support and resources. So we have two options with that one, and our recommendation is that if, what happens is if there's not enough school data to calculate a standalone SPG grade, school performance grade, for the CLC, then we have one of two options for how to get that school performance grade. The one that we are recommending is using three years of CLC data. So if CLC does not have enough data to calculate their own score, which they did this year, we recommend that we use three years of CLC data in order to calculate that SPG score.
Open to any questions?
And that's for next week?
Next week.
Pending decision for next week, okay? Any questions, board members? Madam Chairman, with your permission?
Go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Powers?
Out-of-state field trip, your consideration. At least middle school, requesting, they had, they took the same trip last year with their eighth graders, so they're looking in the spring, in March, to take their eighth grade class again to Washington DC for a trip. Pinecrest High School, their band is requesting permission to travel for a band competition to Princeton, West Virginia, and that will be coming up relatively quickly, October sixth and seventh. An out-of-state trip, but not an overnight trip there, they'd be traveling and coming back just be after midnight there, so. Any questions that I can answer related to those trips?
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Madam Chair, with your permission? Items E, F, and G, Mr. Barath will manage, they, since they go together, we will, well, actually, E and F go together, and then G?
E, F, and G, they all go together.
Okay, and we'll do it with dispatch.
Right through it. In order for the county to recover sales and use taxes on the construction of new schools, there are some requirements that have to be met according to the North Carolina general statutes. They are explained in the executive summaries. Basically, it starts with that the county must be the originator of the payments, easy enough to do, we send our approved invoices over to them. The other thing is, is that they must have some ownership of the property. And so what we have is a multi-step process here. The general statutes permit school boards and counties to enter into what's called an interlocal agreement, and so that is one that is being proposed for the three projects, the new Aberdeen, Southern Pines, and Pinehurst schools. And by entering into the agreement, the county gives the school board complete authorization as its agent to oversee the construction, to enter into the contracts, and perform the duties that we typically do on a new school. The Area One Elementary School, the board had already transferred the property into the name of the county, and they are the originator of the checks on that one. That's done through the limited obligation bond, but through a general obligation bond, we're doing a little different on this one. So there are three items here, and we have one, which is the interlocal agreement, and that's being presented. You will note that it says draft across the top of it. This, as Dr. Grimsey said, was because we were still working with counsel from the county on finalizing some of the language. We just received that here this morning, so at next week's business meeting, we will have the final agreements in there that have been reviewed and approved. The next step is a lease agreement. The lease agreement will have, and there the, where the school board is the landlord, we are leasing the property to the county for the duration of construction of the school only. At the completion of construction, the lease is terminated. So it's at no cost that we're leasing it to them, it's just, again, this is all to give them the benefit to collect sales and use tax. That can be a big number you're talking about. If we are spending twenty-six million dollars to build, then half of that's in material, half of that's in labor, so you're talking sales and use tax on maybe thirteen million dollars. That's a lot of opportunity for the county not to pass up on recovering. So, and the last item is the contract agreement. Last month, the board approved the contract with J.M. Thompson to build the Aberdeen School. This is just a technical revision where it changes the language in here, where it refers to, it used to be just a, an agreement between Moore County Board of Education, it will now read in there, agreement between county of Moore, by and through its authorized agent, the Moore County Board of Education. This is, process is done in school districts across North Carolina for the exact same reasons to take advantage of collecting and recovering sales and use taxes. Any questions that I can answer?
John, if I could ask, just, to interpret legal counsel on this, if there's going to be any final tweaking to the language, should one or more of these items be cited as, as board action items next week, just to certify any final revisions to any documents the board has received tonight?
Each one needs to be voted on independent of the other, so.
So they, they, these are not consent agenda items?
Correct.
These are all board action items, that's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
And then that way, by, it just so happens, since it has to be done that way, then the board can be advised of any technical, further technical adjustments between now and next week.
Correct, sir.
Are board members comfortable with that explanation?
And you'll email us the, when you get the real draft?
Yes. That'll be attached and coming to you.
Perfect. It'll be attached to the agenda for next week.
Okay, perfect.
Madam Chairman, with your permission?
Yes, please.
Item H, Mr. Barath.
The modular unit lease agreements for the temporary Pinehurst Elementary School. As the board is well aware, through the development of the project since two thousand and fifteen in the budget sheets, we had previously identified three million dollars for Pinehurst for the acquisition of property to build a new school upon. Since that time, great things have happened, a great relationship with the village of Pinehurst, and helping us to identify opportunities where we can move onto a temporary site, tear down on the existing site, and build a new school. When those dialogues began, process through that, we revised our budget sheet to take that three million dollars identified for land acquisition and put it towards a temporary modular campus. So what we've been doing since has been working with the village to identify what property they have that would be the best for Moore County schools with the least impact to the operations of the village. And we ver- we evaluated various elements, the impact to the use by the village, the ability to adapt it to a school campus, utility availability, transportation access, the site development impact and security. And after going through a couple of different sites, it was settled on that Rassie Wicker Park provided the best opportunity for us. It's a great area, the site is nearly level, I don't see that often.
John, if we could, Blair, if you would please open up the aerial view for, while that can be in the background while John is talking.
Yes, that one.
Yeah, the map.
The site is great, it's an existing soccer field pitch up there where the new modular units outlined in the red would be located. It has water and sewer running along the left side of it, so easy to tap into and have utilities right there. The bomb and the screen, that is the Pinehurst Fire Station right there, so easy access to the fire department should that ever be needed. And it can be secured with a fence along the top side towards two eleven and down on the left. We also have the opportunity, the inline rink there, which is outdoor paved surface that we'll be able to utilize for our PE as well, and there's already some existing play structures.
The splash pad.
I did not say that, I'll be noted. Remember I does about that one up. Throughout the, so with that in mind, we, the town, or the village has been very receptive to this, the progress of the use of it has continued very well. We're going to be putting together a lease agreement that we'd bring to the board to execute for the use of the property during this period. We've begun reaching out to vendors for the modular units, we need to get those going here very soon. And we reached out to four of the larger vendors of modular units in North Car- that provide units in North Carolina, the schools. Two of them responded to requests, and we set, looked at leasing options to, for these facilities. Right now, the modular unit industry has faced some unique factors that we, they have not previously faced. These have had an impact to the cost and availability. Typically, we would find across the state of North Carolina, some large units available from school districts wishing to unload them, but we are not finding that anywhere across the state. We are finding small, single units that some districts are willing to get rid of, but none of the large units. We have anticipated that, the cause of that, and we correlated the cause of that to a lot of this class size reduction mandates on the K-three grades, and that a lot of school systems need to maintain some flexibility at their sites in not releasing some of these. Right to the north of us, Wake County Public Schools, earlier in their year was looking, advertised to get rid of a bunch of large mobile units, and they very quickly pulled them off the market when they sat down and evaluated exactly what the potential impact to them would be. We have also asked the vendors to reach out to adjacent states, Georgia, Florida, South Carolina, Virginia, and not getting much back out of there either. There's been a lot of cost and production impacts. Hurricane Maria that hit Puerto Rico has put a lot of demand on the manufacturing industry to crank out a lot of these units and have them shipped down to the island to help with the recovery that's still going on. We are also seeing the impacts of tariffs on the increase of cost of materials that's going into making all these units. So we have been working with the two vendors that responded and trying to find the best options that, where we can maximize our funds that we have with the least amount of impact, and working towards twenty-seven-month lease agreements. After looking at some of the proposals, at the two proposals we received, we reached out to the vendors and asked them to split them. One vendor provides half the units, the other vendor provides the other half. We are expecting our final prices to come in this week, that's why I do not have a recommendation at this time, but I will bring an update and a recommendation to the board at your business meeting next week on the tenth, when I have all those factors and numbers in.
And that would necessitate a board action item as well.
That would. So that's what I have at the moment.
And that's the reason why there's an NA by superintendent's recommendation at this point, but yet this is a pending action item.
Correct.
And John, the urgency associated with this is because we are, we are concerned about what we've seen as a pattern with inflation, and we have consulted with the county manager on this, and, and he concurred with us that, given a twenty-seven-month lease, the sooner we get started on this and secure these, one way or another, we're going to end up with these modulators after we're done with them. So why not get them in advance of our need, rather than have them lingering after our need? If we've got to pay on a full twenty-seven-month lease, let's get them ahead of time, get them at a. get them at a, a lower lease rate, and we can save some money that way.
Plus, we need to get in production.
Correct.
That's more critical right now, to make sure the units are in place, have hooked up, and are ready to move in as soon as teachers are done at the current school.
So there's not really a recommendation on the table, but there will be one. Board members, do you have any questions about points of fact that John has shared?
I do, just so the public knows, these are large modular units, so we would not be able to use any of the ones we may get rid of at Moore County Schools.
Correct.
Because somebody's gonna ask that question.
Yeah, when you see the design there, it really depends on us using six, or six-unit-
Somebody's gonna ask that question, so I just wanna make sure they add it.
No, I understand that, and I'm elaborating on, on his response. We, we can't have thirty individual modular units here, we've gotta have them more compact than that.
And just to refi- remind us of the timeframe, um, that this, the students would be moving into these modulators next fall, is that correct?
Correct, they will start their school year next August in the modular campus.
So the sooner that they can get into production and be ready for, uh, move in over the summer, the better.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, what, what do we gain by using two different vendors?
The vendors have expressed that with a short-term lease, they're somewhat concerned about the ability to reuse the units at the end of two years, that will there be enough of a demand to put them in, or are some of the units gonna sit on their, uh, uh, central campus sites as just being in storage? So if, they said if we do half of them, and the owner said, yeah, if we do half, that mitigates some of the risk, brings the cost down, uh, some that way. And then they are confident that they can have most of these units put into service at the end of the twenty-seven months, as opposed to risking having some of them sitting in their yard.
It's cheaper to us.
So it's sort of like one contractor building two schools.
It, is it cheaper to us in the long run?
We hope so, and that's why I said, I'm expecting my final numbers to come in tomorrow, so.
And, and we believe leasing is still less expensive than purchasing, John.
By far.
And see, they would prefer us buy it. If we'd be willing to buy it, they'd be willing to s- sell all of them to us, but when we're leasing, they know they're gonna be taking them back, so they're not quite as interested in the leasing side of this as they would be in the purchasing side.
John, do we own all those trailers and, on Pinehurst Elementary, or do we lease any of those?
We do not currently lease any of our modular units.
This is a much nicer site than I was anticipating that we would come up with just in terms of, uh, the acceptance by parents and teachers and community for a relatively short period of time, and, um, and it doesn't give the sense of sort of a bunch of standalone trailers on a security issue. It looks very compact, it's right, what, how far from the police station that?
Across the street.
Across the street.
Yep.
Plus, there are lots, there are three different ways you can get in and out of there too.
It's three blocks from the existing school.
Police and fire department right next door.
All kinds of money.
All right.
Any other final comments, questions for Mr. Barath on this topic?
No.
Mr. Barath, please explain to the board what flushed water is, because I've already gotten questions, people are trying to picture what flushed water is.
Yeah, we're not gonna go down gray water reus.
Not, not talking about.
Basically, what this has to do, in two thousand and twelve, the town of Robbins extended the water service up to serve the North Moore High School, uh, area, uh, school itself, and it's a dead-end run of a line, and so to maintain quality of water in that line, they must flush water through that line to keep it from getting stagnant and stopping. So what they do is say, what they refer to as blow-off at the end of the line, which means they just dump water out. And when they did the line, uh, at that time, uh, staff and the board, uh, worked with the town of Robbins to say, instead of doing that, how about selling it to the school at a discounted rate, where the school, uh, system built a storage tank out there and used that water for irrigation of the athletic fields. And so back in two thousand and twelve, the town of Robbins and the Moore County Board of Education entered into an agreement, uh, to, uh, purchase the water at a dollar eighty-seven per thousand gallons of the flushed water. So this worked out very well, uh, the school system was able to save significant funds on water for irrigation, as well as the, uh, town of Robbins to recover some cost of what they would cons- have as a straight dumping loss. Well, this, uh, agreement was supposed to be renewed every two years. Uh, back, so back in two thousand and twelve, uh, this agreement, I have to admit, I was not aware of, uh, when I joined Moore County Schools, and the current town manager, um, David Lambert, uh, found, discovered this, uh, oversight, and brought it to my attention, at which point we both concluded that this still serves the best interest of the board and the town to continue this agreement. For the past seven years, or I'm sorry, six years, both parties have honored the previous agreement, and, uh, since then, there have been increasing costs to the utilities department, and so, uh, right now, uh, the proposed agreement indicates an increase of twenty percent of cost to two twenty-five per thousand, still considered a savings to the district. Uh, for example, in here, the county of Moore is four dollars and five cents per thousand gallons, town of Southern Pines, three dollars and eighteen cents per thousand gallons, two twenty-five, still as a savings to the Moore County School System. This, uh, agreement has been reviewed by, uh, the board attorney, and comes with staff's recommendation to the superintendent. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Is there an upper lim- is there a limit to the number of gallons that they flush, or?
We pretty much use, anything they flush, we store it, and then we drain out of that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, so now you have an accurate picture in your mind of what flushed water is.
The explanation.
All right, Madam Chair, um, the staff awaits the board's direction on, uh, draft for your agenda for next week.
Okay, so we need to talk about other items currently slated for board action that we've discussed are E, F, G, and H. Are there any other items, uh, recommended for board action?
That sounds good to me.
What about, you said D, what about D?
It's out-of-state field trip?
It'd just be consent.
Oh, I'm, I'm, oh, I thought you were saying consent, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I, I reversed, I, I'm, I'm seeing if, if everybody's awake.
Do, do we need to bring the resolution out separately?
Okay, so items A, E, F, G, and H for board action, and the rest consent?
Yes.
All right, do you have that, Sonia? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, uh, last item on our agenda, our board comments. Um, who would like to start?
Good meeting.
Good meeting. Thank you.
I just wanna thank all the instructional staff for the schools, um, the administrative staff. It seemed to be a good beginning to the school year, exciting times with children, uh, watched from afar on a couple of places as I was driving around, and the children were all excited to be here, or be in school and get back in. Um, and it was through prior planning by the teachers and administrators to get them started right off the bat, so it's, it looks like it's been a good year, beginning of the year. Thank you.
No comments here.
I'm wearing red for Ed, so I just echo-
Red for Ed.
Red for Ed, this was Red for Ed Day, in case you didn't notice, yes. And a special thank you to everyone who's made this, the start off of this year, be what appears to be so smooth. Many more days to come, just like it.
Yeah, I'm tired, and I, I didn't even go to school, and I'm tired. Um, but I did wanna say something, Bruce and I got to visit the new school, and it was great to walk through it with John, um, took some amazing pictures, and it was just huge, it was so big, I just, it's gonna be very, very surreal to see when everything is in there and it's, um, operating as a elementary school, so it was just, it got me even more excited to see it, so.
The only thing I'll say is I thought the kickoff assemblies this year were, um, very energizing and energetic, it was fun to see all the staff, um, you know, from all the schools, um, at each of the three, uh, assemblies, and, and it's just such a, it's a great tradition, it's such a great way to start off the year, so thanks to all who, who participated in that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to compliment you on your, your talks at those kickoff meetings too. Nicely done.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, we stand adjourned. Oh, wait, I can't do that.
May I make that motion?
Yes, you can make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, six zero, thank you. We're adjourned.